Oh Craig, I didn't copy you. You know, we're not doing Elaine's, right? Did you hear that?
Karen just said, mentioned that. I didn't see any emails.
Yeah, there was an email that Karen and Sam, so I should have copied you. I gotta remember you. So that's one last thing. So we got Ron Gelsounis twice, that's it. Thank you for my little table.
You're welcome. I don't like this, it's not for the priority live streams.
I'd like it to be permanent.
With compliance, in compliance with the Open Public Meanies Act of 1975, adequate notice that this meeting has been provided. If any member has reason to believe that this meeting is being held in violation of this act, they should state so at this time.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to your Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mrs. Werner, Mr. Vannudo.
Here.
Ms. Hessel, Mr. Ledwin.
Here.
Mrs. Notch.
Here.
Ms. Sheehan.
Here.
Mr. Wash.
Here.
Mr. Zexar.
Here.
Mr. Cattado.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we need a motion to adopt the minutes of April 27, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Ledwin, seconded by Ms. Sheehan. Mr. Ledwin?
Yes.
Mrs. Notch?
Yes.
Ms. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Wash?
Abstain.
Mr. Zexar?
Yes.
Mr. Cattado?
Yes.
Mr. Vannudo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two resolutions this evening. So we need a motion to adopt Resolution 525-2023-1, which would be 429 Beach Avenue LLC, and also a motion to adopt Number 525-2023-2, Nicholas Mitch, 240 Windsor Avenue in Cape May.
Make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Notch, seconded by Mr. Zexar. Mr. Wash?
Pause for a second, Ms. King, which?
Resolution?
It's two.
Just do the resolutions one at a time.
One at a time.
Because there might be different votes for them, because some people may have participated or not, so just do one and then do the other.
Okay, so we'll backtrack and start off with Motion 525-23-1, 429 Beach Avenue LLC.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Sheehan, seconded by Mrs. Notch. Mr. Wash?
Abstain.
Ms. Sheehan?
No.
Sorry, Mrs. Notch?
No.
Mr. Ledwin?
One second, pause, pause, pause. The fact that you voted no, if you voted, is this the one that was denied?
Yes.
Yeah. If you voted no at the hearing, you should be voting yes now, because this resolution denies it.
Okay. Should I recall that?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Sheehan, seconded by Mrs. Notch. Mr. Wash?
Abstain.
Ms. Sheehan?
Yes.
Ms. Notch?
Yes.
Mr. Ledwin?
Yes.
Mr. Zexar?
Yes.
Mr. Cattado?
Yes.
Mr. Vannudo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the second resolution is 525-2023-2, Nicholas Mitch at Ford, or 240 Windsor Avenue in Cape May.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Zexar, seconded by Ms. Sheehan. Mr. Ledwin?
Yes.
Mrs. Notch?
Yes.
Ms. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Wash?
Abstain.
Mr. Zexar?
Yes.
Mr. Cattado?
Yes.
Mr. Vannudo?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. King, do you have an announcement?
Chairman, are you on to the Elaine's one now?
Uh, yeah, we're gonna start. The application is first on the dock would be Elaine's Property Management.
That's 513 Lafayette Street, Block 105, 3 Lot's, Lot 13. That's the Elaine's application. That is an appeal of an HPC determination. This afternoon, the attorney for the HPC and the attorney for the applicant indicated that there was a proposed solution that might be acceptable to the HPC, and the applicant wanted to go and price that out and see if that might be a way to work around the difficulty, which of course, we encourage if the HPC can work out with the applicant. So I invited those attorneys not to have to make the trip tonight, because they're asking for adjournment jointly. So the motion that I'd recommend being made is a motion to adjourn, to have this matter heard at our next meeting, which would be June?
22nd.
22nd. And that would, there would be, I don't know if notice is necessary for this, but if there was, this will be your notice, that it would be June 2nd if this vote goes through. There won't be any further published notice, this is the notice of that hearing. So if someone can make that motion, Mr. Chairman, if you're inclined.
Can someone make the motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Sheehan, seconded by Mr. Zexar. Give me one second. Mr. Ledwin?
Yes.
Mrs. Notch?
Yes.
Ms. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mr. Wash?
Yes.
Mr. Zexar?
Yes.
Mr. Cattado?
Yes.
Mr. Vannudo?
Yes.
Thank you. Can I just say, that's June 22nd, 2023.
Oh, if I said June 2nd, I mispoke, June 22nd.
22nd, yes.
Thank you, Ms. King.
Thank you.
All right, then, without Elaine's, our next application would be Scott and Sarah Fisher at 1141 Pennsylvania Avenue, Block 1124. Please come forward.
If you could introduce yourself as well.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board Members. My name is Ron Gelsounis, appearing on behalf of the applicants, Scott and Sarah Fisher, who are to my left, they are the owners of 1141 Pennsylvania Avenue. The proposal this evening is to construct in addition to the south side of the building, with several infilled areas, along with some additional improvements and amenities to the property. Now, the addition will be a one-story, to match the existing building, and will be fully compliant with all of the setback requirements. The addition will be constructed in front of a detached garage, which will prevent the garage from being used for its intended purpose as a garage, and that converts it into an accessory use of, in the category of other outbuilding. And a variance is created because of that conversion to the other outbuilding, because another outbuilding can exceed a certain dimension, 10 feet high, 12 feet in length, and the existing detached garage would do that, if it's converted. A proposed pool is also proposed for the backyard, which of course, will create a variance, because pools are not permitted in that zone. My witness this evening is Mr. Steve Fenwick, from Fenwick Architects. How are you, Mr. Fenwick? If you're ready to go, of course, Scott Fisher and Sarah Fisher, if we could have them sworn in.
Okay, well each of you, will all of you please raise your right hand? Also, we're gonna swear in our board engineer Craig Hurles, do each of you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self you got?
I do.
Thank you.
Yep, yep, please, just briefly put your credentials on the record.
My name is Stephen Fenwick, I'm a licensed architect and planner.
Yeah, you got it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My name is Stephen Fenwick, I'm a licensed architect and planner in the state of New Jersey. And I've been coming to Cape May before this board and all the other boards for 40 years, so.
And you've been recognized as an expert by this board?
I think so. I think Mr. King knows me awfully well, so, and Mr. Hurles, so.
I'm, I have a hard time hearing you. Can you talk into the mic a little bit more?
Yeah.
I think you just gotta get closer.
Yeah.
Get closer? There you go, I'm sorry. So yeah, so I've been doing this a long time here, and I don't see Mrs. Hutchinson, I heard she retired. She was great, I thought she was great. But, so, Mr. Hurles, he's probably my best reference here. I know he loves me, so.
Mr. Chairman?
So if that's okay, that's my credentials.
Recognize Mr. Fenwick as an expert in architecture.
I mean, I did a lot of buildings in town, I could give you names if you want, if you're not familiar with me. I did the Sturdy Savings Bank behind us, I did the condominiums over by the Water Tower, oh, I don't remember their names now, over by Corgi Street, back by Corgi Street, done lots of houses, just done a lot of work in Cape May City.
Safe to say, you're familiar with the city of Cape May and?
Very familiar.
And the zoning ordinances.
Yeah, I'm also on the HPC Committee for the new guidelines, so they asked me to help them with that. We designed Karen's house a long time ago. I've been around, okay?
Mr. Fenwick, why don't you?
I have a question. Is he certified?
Certified as what?
For this in New Jersey?
I just said I'm a licensed architect and planner.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that part.
Okay, yeah.
That was before you got the mic.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, since 1980 or before, yeah.
All right, Mr. Fenwick, why don't you take us through your design?
Okay.
Of the additions, point them out.
Okay.
additions to the structure, and take us through.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I'm just gonna start with the, like, the building and the structure, like Ron's asking.
Please take the microphone with you, Mr. Fenwick. Thank you.
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
I'm gonna come back to this drawing.
Are these drawings part of the application?
Yes, this is part of the application.
Thank you.
I'm referring to C1.
Thank you.
Yes. And that was revised on 3123, after going over the engineer Craig's comments. So it was brought up to speed with Craig. So the pink area is the new house, I mean, is the existing house that's being renovated, and then there's little shaded pieces are additions. There's a little addition in the back, in the front, and along the side. Now the side addition is, makes the garage, well, the garage right now is not a garage, already it's not a garage. So we're, this, this blocks the access to the garage, but we meet all the parking requirements up front, and I could go through all the zoning if you'd like. The lot size requirement in the zone is 5,000 feet, and we're 6,250 feet. The predominant lot size in this zone is 40 feet wide. Not all of them, but most of them are 40 feet wide. So we're 25% bigger than most of the lots, like, more than 90% of the lots. We meet all We meet all the setbacks, the lot width, the lot frontage, the rear yards, the side yards, and the parking. We, we conform. Um, we meet, we conform with the height, the coverage, the FAR, and the lot usage ratio, which is kinda unique to this zone. And, um, the outbuilding, so, part of the reason we're here, Ron will explain it perhaps in more technical terms, is that the existing garage building, we're saying we're gonna convert it for use as an accessory structure. It's kind of already an accessory structure in the sense that you can't park in there anyway, at the present time. But, um, but, we're not changing that garage at all. We're leaving the structure just the way it is, we're not adding to it or subtracting from it, but, i, the way the zoning regs are, an accessory use as a garage is, uh, has moral... The ordinance has different regulations, it allows a larger structure than an accessory building like a shed in the city of Cape May. So, w, we need a use variance, I believe, for you, or, is that correct, Ron? Are we asking for a use variance for, for this structure?
Well, there'll be dimensional variances.
And dimensional variances. So we're not really changing it at all, it exists, it doesn't affect the neighbors or, or anything. We're just not using it for a garage, and we're creating two parking spaces up front. And we're, we're, in many ways, I think we're improving the streetscape and the, the facade, and the use of the house and the property. Then we get into the, um... So, yeah, so let me be more particular, onto the accessory uses. So, the, the garage, um, conformed, and, as a shed, which is what the zoning wants to call it, 'cause it's not a garage, i, it, it, um... It doesn't, it doesn't meet the, uh, the height requirements, it doesn't meet the maximum length, and it doesn't meet the maximum width.
So Steve, let me, let me, I'll, I'll go over that with you.
But it does meet the garage requirement.
On that point, right, so the current structure, the current detached garage, um, is twelve feet high, twenty-two feet in length, and fifteen feet wide.
Correct.
And that complies with the ordinance for a detached garage.
Correct.
Um, since we're no longer gonna use it as a garage to park a car, it'll be used for storage, you're only allowed to have a, what you call the shed, what the ordinance calls an other building.
Accessory building.
Right, ten feet high, twelve feet long, and ten feet in width.
Okay, yeah, it's on the chart, yeah.
So, n, nothing's changing with the structure of the garage.
It's identical building, not changing it.
And if, if the garage, uh, is used, half for storage and half, I think, is a screened-in porch, and we'll hear more, uh, from, from the property owner on that.
Right, how it's gonna be used.
Is, is there any detriment to the neighborhood, to the surrounding properties, as a result of leaving that structure in its current configuration, but not using it as a garage?
The only way it might be a detriment is if it, if it removed parking from the site, but we provided the same parking that is required by the ordinance. So, in, it, in terms of bulk, light, air, it's the same building. So it doesn't affect the neighbors or, or anything to that effect.
So the two spaces is what is required?
Correct.
Under the ordinance.
Correct.
So there's no detriment there from not using it as a garage?
None that I'm aware of.
And your expansion itself on the side and infill areas, they all comply with the setback requirement and all other bulk requirements?
Yes, for the primary structure, it, it complies with all the, um... On our initial application, we were shy, um, because we didn't take the, uh, um, the, uh, lot usage ratio into account carefully, 'cause it's not in most of your zones, and we kinda missed it. But Craig pointed it out to us, and we adjusted the size of the additions to meet the requirements of the ordinance. So, yes, it meets all, this, this addition here meets all the requirements of the ordinance.
Now, you chose to do this as one-story. Can you just talk about the neighborhood, the streetscape, the, the, the character of the neighborhood, and the other buildings? And this is a semi-detached, correct? There's a...
Yes, it's a...
Another owner to the other half of that structure?
If you can refer to the drawing, you'll see this gray, uh, structure here, that, that's the adjoining property. So it's attached, it's a semi-detach, comes, it's called semi-detached in your ordinance.
And that is one-story?
Yes.
Now, you could've made a design that was two-stories and not even be here tonight, I understand.
Well, we would've, oh, if I went over the house, you mean?
That's a pool for now, I'm talking about the addition to the structure.
Yeah, 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 maybe, yeah.
So, y, you designed the single-story, tell us how that fits in with the other half of the building and with the neighborhood?
Well, as you kinda get educated at the HPC, not that we're in this district, they kinda want you to meet the, uh, the spirit of the streetscape and the neighborhood. And it's a neighborhood of one-story ranch house.
This would be considered Village Green?
And, and, so this is, these drawings show, the new facade is here, this is a small addition here, this is the neighbor. And, um, um, so here's the new facade looking directly at it. It's got a nice little porch in the front where you could sit out, it's a kinda neighborhood where people get together, they talk to each other, apparently, I mean, I haven't lived here, but Scott and Sarah enjoy sitting out on the, and chatting with the, with the neighbors. This is what it looks like now, so now, um, it's not nearly as inviting, in my opinion. And, um, this is what it would look like from the side as you approached from the adjoining neigh, from this side, here. This is the, the porch and the entry here, and the simple gable, which always invites entry to a home. And, um, and, um, it, it, the whole addition really i, i, improves the, improves the house. And then the, the next, uh, item is the pool.
Well, I don't wanna get to the pool yet, Steve.
Oh, okay.
Back, 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 back to the house. Now, if, if, if you were designing Village Green today...
For Phil Robinson?
Protester, whoever did, I don't know, I don't go back that far.
I do.
I, if, you, you wouldn't have every house cookie cutter the same? In fact, that would be discouraged in, in, for a planning or for a, a neighborhood.
It should be discouraged, yeah, it should be variation on a theme, anyway, yeah.
Ah, right, yes, my point, they would want you, they would encourage you, possibly require you, to have different types of house, just different variations in theme, as you say.
Yeah, sure, sure.
So, so by, by adding this and changing the facade, changing the front, putting the porch, does that accomplish that goal after the fact?
Well, it enhances this house, and it enhances the neighborhood, and other people might consider doing this same thing, you know? It takes that barracks feeling away, and what you're describing where they would all be the same. I have to be honest, I haven't, like, checked out the whole zone to see the variations that are there now, but I can certainly say that this, this design work here is gonna improve the facade of the Fisher's home, and so therefore, it helps the streetscape on their block. Now, their block is unique in that their...
Well, I don't, I don't wanna get there yet, I don't wanna get there yet. Not, not yet, not yet. So, ba, back to the, the streets, that, that's a benefit that benefit, benefits the whole area, Village Green, in bringing that variation. If I'm understanding correctly, there's already some variation in neighborhood, this adds to it.
I'm just assuming I have to, I did not do a survey on that.
There's been some...
Maybe Scott and Sarah could talk to that later.
So, i, in terms of having a second-story, sort of a thor, a sore thumb sticking in the air in a neighborhood of single-family homes?
Yeah.
Is this a better design to have a single-story with all of the good attributes you've just, you've just described?
Well, I certainly think so, that's why we designed it this way. It's also, it's better living, it's more efficient use of space, and, uh, there were no detriments to this design, only benefits.
In fact, I think we'll hear from the applicant later on that this'll, intention is that they'll retire there, and they wanna have a single-story, that's also...
It's, that's what I live in, and it's what, it's great.
So, consider all these, what I'll call, benefits.
Okay.
Now, our, our detriment is where, where blocking off the garage, it's no longer going to be used to park a car.
Right.
If there's any detriment that flows from that, from having an other outbuilding, a shed, that's bigger than what you're allowed.
Right.
Keeping in mind that the structure is already there.
Right.
Do all the benefits you've just testified to gone through substantially outweigh that detriment of leaving that garage there in its current size and configuration?
I certainly think so, yes. They def, they substantially outweigh not doing the addition, yes.
And again, no detriment to the neighborhood for those reasons, benefits to the neighborhood, and you're still providing the needed off-street parking.
Yeah, that, yeah, there's no detriment, and so, and there, there's definitely benefits, there's aesthetic benefits, improvement to the property, um, enhancements to the streetscape.
And you're doing it while complying with the lot coverage?
Completely within the bulk requirements, the height requirements?
All bulk requirements.
Of the principal structure. Right, so there's no detriments to bulk, light, air.
Okay, now, you were about to begin speaking about the lot size, I think, so...
Yeah, I was gonna say...
I have a little handout.
Okay. Okay. I got, I have a board that I, that shows this. So, so I kinda, can I talk about the pool, Ron?
Yes.
Okay, so, so I should also point out, if you go back to the zoning chart, and the way that Cape May zoning ordinance is written, it, it, it sends you, if you are gonna build a pool, to a, a separate area in the ordinance that describes the requirements for pools. So, um, this particular zone, the R4 zone, does not send you there, it is not listed as an accessory use in this zone. I don't know why you can only think that maybe they thought there were gonna be forty-foot lots, and it was a waste of time, who knows? There are, there are, uh, one, two, three fifty-by-one-twenty-five lots in these two adjacent zones, and these are all, um, larger lots up here, I think, I think they're actually sixty-by-one-twenty-five. The Fisher's lot is here, it's fifty-by-one-twenty-five, but interestingly enough, this whole block is fifty-by-one-twenty-five, or sixty-two-hundred-and-fifty square feet, where forty-foot, where, where... Five thousand is the requirement, so they're sixty-two-fifty, they're twenty-five percent more. And, and, um, most of the lots are either like forty-two feet or forty feet wide. So what I, getting back to the zoning category for pools, I wanna point out that we meet all the requirements for pools. So, if we had, if this was an undersized lot in one of the other residential zones, we would be entitled to build this pool, but because this zone doesn't say pools are an accessory use, we're here before you, asking for permission to build this pool. But if we had a fifty, but, there's, as you know, there's many different-sized lots. Cape May is, it's not usually zoned in a grid like this, you know, the lot parcels are not usually this way. This was kinda like post-nineteen fifty, I guess. And all the old lots are all different various sizes, some of which are really big, and some of which are small. But you would be allowed to build a pool in any one of those lots, as long as you met the setbacks and coverage requirements, which we do. We meet all those requirements.
So Steve, this...
So why would you not be allowed to build one in the R4 zone? I have no idea.
Well, because your ordinance says you're not allowed, but we'll, we'll, we'll address that. This sheet you're showing?
Yes.
That's not part of the application?
It's not.
We'll have it marked as, as A2?
All right, here, I have one here.
And we'll, we'll turn that in.
Right, give it to Rich? Okay, Karen?
So, let's talk about, Steve, what, what is unique about this property versus the rest of Village Green? Because at some point, the governing body passed the zoning ordinance that said you can't have a pool in Village Green. Now, I'll call it Village Green, what you're pointing out, I think, is that...
It doesn't say you can't have one either, it just doesn't say you can have one, I think that's a difference.
When, when you say one block, and I'll refer to the handout I just passed around, let me draw your attention to it, Steve, right here?
Yeah.
Okay, so, one block, you're saying between Philadelphia and Pennsylvania avenues on, on, on the applicant's side of the street?
Right, that whole block.
Those lots are different than every other lot in Village Green, correct?
Yes, yes.
How are they different? You said they're fifty-foot...
They're twenty-five percent bigger, most of the other lot, well, don't quote me on that, because m, most of the lots are forty feet wide, and then it's twenty-five percent bigger. I didn't do the math on the forty-two-foot lots, but there's a lot of forty-two-foot lots. But we're fifty-foot, and it's really only this block and this block up here that, um, are, are larger. The zone, minimum lot in the zone is forty-foot wide required, and five thousand feet. That's the requirement, we exceed that. We're fifty-foot wide and sixty-two-hundred-and-fifty square feet, so we are unique relative to most of the lots in the zone.
So, on, on the tax map, the one I handed out, it, it shows them as twenty-five-foot sections. Two of those twenty-five tax lot maps equal the applicant's property.
Right.
And so on, so forth on that entire side of that block.
That's correct.
So, there's something else about this block that we'll call it.
Okay.
There are six homes located on this block in that distance because those lots are bigger.
Right.
And if we look at the map and look at all the other blocks in Village Green?
Right.
I believe you'll see that there are seven homes?
Right.
From corner to corner.
Yeah, if you go right across the street, you can count them on that drawing I just gave Karen, and, and on Ron's handout. So there are seven houses here, and there are six houses here.
So, we're here this evening to ask the board for a variance to allow us to have a pool?
Yes.
In this area, we'll call Village Green.
Yes.
Now, a concern is gonna be, well, if you let these folks have a pool, then there's nothing to differentiate this property from every other property in Village Green, and therefore, we'd have to give a variance to everyone. But that's not a true statement, is it?
That is not a true statement, you know, a, as you know, there have been pool applications before the board outside of this zone, and maybe their deck was too close to the pool, or the pool was a little too close to the house, well, we're, we, we meet all the requirements.
So when you say you meet the requirements, you meet the requirements that are set forth in the accessory use ordinance that pertains to pools?
To pools, and that, that ordinance pertains to the, all the zones. Except it's not targeted for R4, I don't know why. Because there, you know, it seems like, if you can fit a pool, why couldn't you have a pool? What is so special about the R4 zone that pools aren't allowed, you know? If you had a big lot, let's say you bought three-twenty-five footers, why couldn't you have a pool? Or what, let's say you, 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 you...
Well, well...
You're on a corner, and you could, you could fit it.
What you're saying, Mr. Fenwick, is you have a unique set of circumstances which would justify you having...
I, if it was me, I would've just referred to that part, if I was the planner at that time, and didn't think that everything was gonna be forty feet wide, I would've said, you refer to the, the pool ordinance for the city of Cape May, and if you could fit one nicely, which is what your ordinance requires...
Well, we don't know the hist, maybe someone here...
No, we don't know the history.
Maybe someone here knows the history of Village Green. Why this one block became fifty-foot wide lots, and the rest of Village Green is forty, except for corner lots, but they have two front yards. And then the quads, we're not even gonna talk about because they're e, even smaller. So, my question to you, Mr. Fenwick, is that, considering that the lots, as you say, are twenty-five percent bigger?
Yes, typically.
Considering that we're only talking about six houses from Pennsylvania Avenue to Philadelphia Avenue?
Yes.
And considering that you can meet all the requirements under the, uh, ordinance that does apply to pools, does that make this site particularly suitable to have a pool? Uniquely suitable, particularly suitable for a pool?
Yeah, I suppose so, it certainly makes it suitable, and if you're gonna say that your ordinance ma, if you meet your ordinance, it, it becomes particularly suitable, it, 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 it makes this lot particularly suitable. Particularly in the sense of being in a zone that's largely smaller lots. I think that's where the word particular comes in.
And considering that you have a lot that's twenty-five percent bigger, and that you're meeting all of the bulk requirements?
Right.
Requirements under the, uh, ordinance for pools?
Right.
If you're meeting those requirements-
Right.
-can it fairly be said that you could cause a detriment to the, to the public, to the neighborhood?
I don't see how, I think the, the ordinance for pools was set up to prevent detriments be created. I did point out on this drawing here, this, in the R1 zone, there's two 50 by 125-foot lots over here in R2. This is historic property, but it's 50 by 125, but it's the same-sized lot, but if you had a pool that fit the pool ordinance, the zoning officer would allow you to build that pool on the same-sized lot as the Fisher's have, only be, because their or, their zone points to the pool ordinance. The R4 zone doesn't, and that's why we're here. I don't think they meant to ban pools from the R4 zone, they just didn't think they were gonna be appropriate perhaps, I don't know.
Well, but if they did, were they talking about the rest of the-
That's what I think-
The rest of Village Green that has 40-foot wide lots and the quads?
I, I think-
Would it be that the ordinance made sense when applied to them, but doesn't make sense when applied to the 50-foot by 125-foot lots, which there's only, we have six houses here?
I, I, it, I think the ordinance was meant to apply to the 5,000-square-foot, 40-foot wide lots, the typical lot in the zone, and, and that's why it was written that way.
So, if the pool's allowed-
I'm guessing, but-
If, if the pool's allowed, then is your opinion there, it would not be a substantial impairment of the zone plan and zoning ordinance because of these factors that establish-
If that was the case, then the whole Cape May pool section of the ordinance would be detrimental, and I don't believe it is, I think it makes sense, and we comply with it, so the answer to Ron's question is it's not detrimental.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Fenwick. I'd just like to take some questions from the applicant now, and then open it up for questions from the board. So, Scott, tell us, you're on, how long you live in Cape May and this property, and your relationship to the property?
I've been here for six years. I've, I've lived in Cape May for over six years now. My wife has owned the house for eight. We've been together for about seven and a half years. I moved down here in 2016-ish. In 2020, I sold my house, Sarah and I were, were going back and forth of where, where we wanted to live, and I was in courthouse. I've been, lived in Cape May County my whole life. My family business is Seashore Ace in Stone Harbor, so I'm as local as local gets.
So this is your primary residence?
This is our primary residence, this is where Sarah and I wanna age in place. We are trying to make our forever home, this is not anything that is ever going to be a resident, rental home, or an Airbnb, or anything like that, this is where we live. My wife works in Lower Township School District-
I've been a district administrator with Lower Township Elementary Schools for over a decade. Last night at our board meeting, I was promoted to the Director of Curriculum and Instruction. I'm deeply invested in this community and this area, I love it here, and as my husband said, we just, we want, we do wanna age in place, this is just a beautiful community, we love our neighborhood, we love our neighbors, and we're just looking to make some improvements to our house.
And you're making a substantial investment into this property?
Sure we are.
Okay. Why, why the design, you've heard all the testimony about coming out on the side versus two stories, why better to have the addition on the side?
We went back and forth, and when we started talking with Steve, he started saying to just stay on the same level, so we're, we're looking the same as the rest of the homes in Village Green. That made sense to us, as we get older, I don't think we wanna have stairs or anything like that to go up and down, so that's the, one of the main reasons, but I think we just want it to be in conformance with, and, and look a lot like the other homes in, in the Village Green.
It was also in consideration for our neighbors, our street is mostly all single-story, and if we were to build up, we'd now be looking into people's backyards, and we really didn't think that that was very considerate for our neighbors, so that was something that we took into consideration.
So, Scott, you have a, a particular reason for wanting the pool above beyond just the recreational reason?
Yes.
Tell the board a little bit about that.
Yes, so I was diagnosed in 2006 with psoriasis, in 2008, I was diagnosed with psoradic arthritis, where that hit me very hard. I, for about 12 months, I battled that, where my joints were stuck. I saw the highest rheumatoid arthritis specialist at Penn, they did not know what was going on with my body, they were looking at me going, my body was on fire, and we don't know why. They started, they started with me on Humira, which is a biological, that was back in 2008. I took that to about 2015. I started Otesla in 2015, got off that around 2020 because it was giving me terrible heartburn and, and kinda messing with the inside of my, my throat and things of that nature, these are, and now I am on Skyrisi. I do have a doctor's note from my, my dermatologist saying that saltwater pools would be helpful, we know this with saltwater, just with the ocean and things of that nature, and I know you can say that, look, you live a half mile down the road from there, and you could go down to the beach whenever you want, but I do own Seashore Ace, I'm the third generation, I am taking more and more responsibility there, so in the summertime, I'm working 60, 70 hours a week. Sometimes I just don't wanna go down to the beach after you're working those long hours, so that would be something that would help my skin out, maybe help me get off some of this medication, or prolong taking it, because these things can cause future problems for me, maybe cancer-ish and things of that nature, so my wife and I have been exploring other ways and therapies to try to help this situation with me.
So, I, I think we're also gonna wanna have some testimony about the garage, there's been already some testimony about how it's, hasn't been used to park a car for some time.
For sure.
So why don't you tell us what's, what's in the garage, and how you currently utilize the garage? And I'm gonna hand out some photographs of the front of the garage and inside the garage.
So, we've actually never parked our cars in the garage. When I purchased this house eight years ago, I was single, and it was certainly enough space for me, but it's, it's a, it is a small amount of space, so the garage has always been used more for storage, 'cause there is a very long driveway, so I would, you know, I'm always able to park my car in the, in the driveway, so it's mostly been used for storage. Obviously, when my husband moved in, part of the reason that we'd like to do an addition is that we do need a little bit more space to make it functional for us, so we would continue to use it for storage, and then to create some additional space that we could utilize outside, we have a sitting area that functions-
As a screened-in porch.
As a screened-in porch.
I, I completely did that myself, I'm a little bit handy, owning a hardware store, I've kind of always like tinkering with things, so we did put a, a wall in and another wall, there is no plumbing, there is no heating in there, so it is really just for another usage, that I can go out there and watch the Phillies in the summertime when she doesn't wanna watch them, or the Sixers-
Did you need to secure, excuse me, did you need to get approval for that?
I didn't ask, like I said, I, I did it myself, so I just put a wall up, there was-
There was existing electric in the garage.
Electrical in there, so I took, I just kinda went off the electrical-
So you didn't go down to construction?
I didn't opt for that, no.
So, just refer to the pictures, Scott.
But, but-
What we're looking at here, you still use that, half of that as storage in, as a garage, actually a storage, about most garages might have?
It's mostly garage, we stole 10 by 11 feet in the back, so it is just a small little room that has, if you notice, it's all screened windows.
So the second page there is the room that's 10 by-
Yeah.
-just 10 feet of the back of that garage?
Yep, that's correct.
And that's, no heat?
No heat.
No air conditioning?
No plumbing.
Nope, no plumbing, no, it's just used as a, a secondary, sorry, a-
Like a screened-in porch.
Okay. All right, does anyone have any questions of Mr. Fenwick or the applicants?
I do. Did you know when you purchased this property, you were R4, and that, that you would not be able to have a pool, you never-
I did not know, that was never disclosed to me when I purchased the property.
You didn't research that?
No. I didn't realize that was even-
And, and nobody ever told her?
No.
Right.
I just have a question too, was this property ever a rental property?
It was, for one summer, we had one family that rented for the entire summer, they actually didn't end up using it, they were renovating a house in Cape May. I spent that summer in Cape May courthouse, it was less than three months total.
And I will say, what we do, well, the reason why we did that is, we were a year and a half into our relationship, we said, you know, let's see if we can live together, so we spent that summer together, and rented, renting out the, the property. After that, we said, okay, how do we get down to Cape May? Within a year and a half, we were married.
Yeah, I knew, I knew right away that I wanted to be in Cape May, not Cape May.
From the pictures that were in this exhibit here, it looks like there's already an above-ground pool in the backyard, is there above-ground pool in the backyard?
There was, but that has been taken down since.
Yeah, that actually, that's, we got it from big lots during the pandemic, when the beaches were closed, kind of out of a, when we didn't know what was going on with the pandemic and, and COVID and everything, and that was not anything that was permanent, we were able to just take it down and throw it-
And there was no permit that you got for, to put the pool in?
No.
We didn't realize it.
We bought a $500 pool, it was less than $500, it was three feet high and 13 feet round.
This question might be, maybe Craig could help me? What are the differences, requirements of an in-ground and an above-ground pool? Does above-ground have to, above-ground have the same requirements as an in-ground?
I'd have to look that up.
You know, as far as setbacks and things like that?
I know we differentiate, but in this case, we're dealing with a in-ground pool. You're gonna have to give me a minute to find that.
Is that tree, is that tree still there, that, when you had the pictures with the pool, the above-ground pool, is that tree still, still there? That would be removed?
No, we're not removing any trees.
No trees, I had the shade commission there, I spoke with her, I told her every single tree on our property would be, would not be touched.
Oh, and that tree's not on our property, that's actually-
The one that you're looking at is behind us, yeah. The, all we have is the pine tree to the, to the south side of our, our property, and then we have one me, or one tree in the front of our property, between the curve in the, the sidewalk.
So it looks like it's really close to your property, in this picture?
It's, I love that tree, it's right on our property.
It, it, yes.
It's, our fence is here, it's right behind us, but it, it gives us great shade.
So on, I guess back in October, you put an application to the zoning officer in Cape May, and, you know, for what you're talking about, the same project, and it sounds like it was pretty thoroughly denied, did he give any reasons for his denial of?
What we were looking for, as Steve said, we, we needed to know, we needed to know what the language was, to, to know what you were, you were denying, and I don't remember the, the exact language that, that was in there.
It was denied because of the conversion of the detached garage into a, um, other outbuilding, by blocking the driveway.
Well, and the pool too, 'cause it says here specifically so.
I have that letter.
And I think, I, I have it also.
I put it in the application.
And I think it was mainly the R, because we're in the R4.
Yeah, I mean, basically, I missed. Okay, I can answer your question. The requirements for swimming pools says all swimming pools, so I refer to my defin, the definition of swimming pool, which says, "Any facility which is constructed, used, or maintained to provide recreational facilities for swimming, bathing, or wading which is capable of containing water to a depth greater than 18 inches." Residential swimming pools are swimming pools that are accessory use to one or more residential dwelling units.
So they're the same?
So there's no differentiation between above-ground or below, or is in-ground?
I have a harder one for you. Legend has it this area is all backfill from Harvard dredging back in the 40s. Could it be that the restriction on pools is because the soil composition might be different here than normal sedentary?
Okay, I'm gonna put, I'm gonna take my engineering hat off and put my planning hat on. Now, Mr. Fenwick questioned the zone plan and whether, you know- If, if the use is not specifically expressly listed as a permitted use, it's not permitted. This is the only residential district that omits swimming pools as a permitted accessory use. My opinion as a planner is they did that on purpose. Why did they do that on purpose? The uses that are permitted here, quads, attached structures, the lot sizes here are smaller than anywhere else, so we have more dense development in the R4 district than anywhere else in the city. What are the negative impacts from pools? The commotion, the noise, et cetera, that's mitigated by space and buffering and, and, you know, distance from other uses. I believe it was good planning practice to omit swimming pools from this district. So that's, that's my opinion as a planner, I think they got it right.
Craig, I have another question for you. When we had another applicant here before, we talked about stone and clamshell, I noticed that there's a lot of stone here, is that considered now 100% lot coverage, stone?
Oh, you're talking about the existing lot coverage?
Yes.
Yeah, that's not really permitted.
Okay, because I noticed that there's stones in the front lawn, there's stones in the back lawn-
Yeah, that's-
And I don't know how they're only at less than 50% lot coverage when stone is considered 100% lot coverage.
Can I just, that was all there before we bought the house?
I'm not saying, I'm not saying, but that's what it's considered, right?
And that's why we're also here.
And that's why I was questioning.
I was gonna say, we're trying to get in compliance.
Their plan shows it all to be lawn.
Yeah.
And it, it's not, okay, they're, they're gonna change?
We're trying to get compliant.
Right.
That's exactly what we're doing.
The ordinance specifically prohibits you from turning it into the sort of wildwood-type dwelling that has all the stone, the ordinance does not allow that. So, when I reviewed this, I looked and I said, okay, they're, they're replacing it all with lawn on the plan, that's, they're bringing it back to conformity, and their, and their lot coverage calculations ba, are, are based on that.
Even with the, like, the two, I guess I'm, I'm asking it because, I know they're fooling with, I'm not saying they're fooling with numbers, but it comes at 49.97 versus 50%. I think they were gonna add two decimal points on one of them, and I guess I was asking that since, they're, they're saying it's lawn, but they're gonna be putting two parking spots in the front, yet going over further on the house, and then paving in the back. And are we still at only 50% according to your calculation?
Yeah, they're, they're 48.1%. So, I mean, I thought their calculations were valid, I didn't take issue with them. So, you know, this is, this is the most intense use you could get on the site without triggering a lot coverage variance?
My other question was, and I could be wrong, but my understanding, in this R, R4 zone, a second story would still need a variance, correct? Because of height restrictions in that area?
So the building height maximum in R4 district is 20 feet.
Okay.
And the existing structure's at 18.
Okay.
So, if they matched the existing structure, like, I have seen that structures in the R4 district get a second floor on them, and still conform.
Okay.
But it's tight.
Okay.
Any more questions? All right, so we will move along to Craig, you will give your review.
Okay.
Craig, I don't know if you're gonna do this in your report, but can you just speak for a second on the, there was testimony, I'm not sure it was terribly exact, but in terms of this 50-foot lot and its uniqueness in the zone, can you, can you speak, I mean, how many lots are 50-foot versus 42 or 40? How unique is this lot? 'Cause I think that is the fundamental question, and I, when I, when I instruct the board on a de-variance, they have to conclude that the lot is, I wanna read the exact language, but this is the, this is where it's gonna be, right? They have to conclude that the lot is-
Here, let me get, Craig, here's a big tax map.
In terms of suit-sitability-
That, that's a-
This is an exhibit that was brought tonight, right?
Yes.
This is not part of the original.
That's an exhibit.
They, they have to show why the location of the site within the municipality or region is particularly suited to the use despite the zoning, and what unique characteristics of the site itself- of the site itself make it particularly appropriate for the proposed use rather than the permitted uses. So what, that's the question the board's gonna have to decide. And I think the argument, as articulated by good counsel and Mr. Fenwick, is that this lot is 50 feet, but many of the other lots are not 50 feet, and that makes this lot particularly well-suited. Or maybe all 50-foot lots are particularly well-suited. I don't know. But I just want to get your, your reaction to that factually, because I think that is the, that's what the board's got to decide.
I think, you know, factually, I can't attack that. This is certainly a wider lot than most. I mean, if you just take a broad look at the R4 district, there are numerous 40-foot lots. There are also numerous, numerous 60-foot lots, but I can't, it's a little more complicated than just looking at it straightforward, because quads require wider lots. So the uses aren't indicated on here. Some are single, they're single-family dwellings in the, in the district. There are attached dwellings, which this is one of, and there are quads, and all of which have different zoning requirements.
But you can knock a quad down.
So it's a little difficult just to take a look at the, I mean, this is quite simply the tax map with the, with the zoning overlaid on it. It's an exhibit. I didn't have a chance to do a lot analysis of this, but, you know, there are some merits to that argument. It is a wider lot, I think, than most attached dwellings. If you look the block to the, to the north, and I believe they're all attached dwellings, there are all 40-foot wide lots. Across, across the street, 40-foot lots.
Yes.
So it does exhibit something a little unique. Now, whether there is sufficient space there to mitigate any of the potential negative impacts, I can't be sure. And we'll hear from the, from potentially the neighbors that may have concerns with regards to that.
Thank you, Mr. Arlos.
I don't know whether I answered your question, but.
You did your best.
Okay. So I'd like to summarize my March 20th, 2023 review memorandum. Once again, this is an application at 1141 Pennsylvania Avenue. It is a semi-detached dwelling. I mean, that semi-detached dwelling means it's, it's essentially a side-by-side. It's attached and has a common party wall with the neighbor. They're proposing in addition to that, it is located in the R4 Modified Medium Density Residential District. Heard testimony with regards to what they're proposing to do. And I think this is like more of a layered application. So if you just look at the additions to the structure, they could go build that if they demolish. So the additions and blocking off the driveway can, let me just talk, let me back up. If this was a blank lot, undeveloped, they could build the dwelling and the additions by right. They could go pull building permits. The blocking of the driveway triggers variances necessary for that rear structure. Okay? So they either need the variances, or they could demo that and still build the structure. The pool, I think, is standalone. You're introducing a use that is, an accessory use that was not contemplated by the zone plan or the zoning ordinance. So those are the kind of the hierarchy of the variances and what, how, how, how this is creating like a stepping stone of variances. Okay? All right. With regards to the completeness review, wait a second. The use of that accessory structure has now been defined as half storage and half a seasonal porch. Is that what we're calling it?
Screened porch.
Okay. So that was unclear, and I asked for clarification in my, in my ordinance. So I just wanted to clarify that, make sure that that was on the record.
Craig, does that change any, with the calculations, any time making that a living space?
Um.
Or is it not living space?
It's, it's not really contemplate, I don't think it meets the strict definition of habitable floor area. So therefore, I don't think it can qualify as living space. The living, the habitable area prohibition is from being included in a detached garage. There's nothing that says anything about this. So by then eliminating that garage use and availability for parking in it, it changes that use. And under the code, it changes from a detached garage to an other outbuilding. So you go from one chart of requirements to another. And the other outbuilding has much more stringent requirements that's triggering these variances. So right now, if you were to look at this, and it was a detached garage, it meets all the requirements. It's permitted. But now, when you convert it to other outbuilding, the height requirements change. You go from 20-foot maximum to 10. So now you have a height variance. You have a length and a width requirements that are now probably half of what they were as a garage. So now the 10-foot, or sorry, 12-foot length, where you have 22-foot existing, and a 10-foot width, where you have 15-foot existing. Those, those are the variances that are all triggered by this. Okay? That conversion from one accessory use to another. Does that make sense? Hopefully, I answered your question. I'm kind of jumping around here, because everyone has lots of questions. But, all right. Let me roll back into my review. I'm on page two. I'm talking about my completeness review. There were some details from the C and D variance checklist that have to be addressed. Item 23, location of trees. I did recommend that information be provided as a condition of approval. Item 26, 27, 28, and 31, waivers were requested for all of those, and I believe that the applicant submitted sufficient information to review this adequately. So I supported those waiver requests. And finally, item number 33, I believe that a landscape plan for application of this nature is warranted and should be provided as a condition of approval. So based on those recommendations, I did support deeming this application complete. Moving on to the zoning review on page three of six. Okay, so under the first, the first table at the top is for the semi-detached dwelling. So that is the, deals with the improvements that are proposed to the main structure, the semi-detached use. All of the bulk area requirements are met. There's no variances that are associated with the addition. So they can build that addition without the pool, without the garage, without the garage conversion, and it would conform, and there would be, and they could go pull building permits. So the other things that they're asking for are triggering the variances. I just went, I just went through the conversion and the, the change from the detached garage to the other outbuilding, and I highlighted the three variances that are necessary, and they're highlighted in the table, zoning table in the middle. The height requirements are exceeded, the length requirements are exceeded, and the width requirements are exceeded for other outbuildings as defined by our ordinance. And finally, swimming pools. So Mr. Fenwick testified that if this was a pool proposed in any other residential district, it would comply to the, the pool requirements. He's correct. Except the R4 does not contemplate that accessory pool use as a permitted accessory use. So therefore, there's a variance necessary for that. Now, when we look at that, like, so the benefits have to be to the neighborhood, not just to the owners. And so there's been a little bit of testimony with regards to that. And I always take the antagonistic view because applicants tend to not highlight that. But so what are the potential adverse impacts here? So it's more intense usage. There's additional noise and activity that are typically associated with pools. So do the positives outweigh the potential negatives? You know, I, I don't know exactly how close that pool is to the adjoining residences. Those are not shown on here, but we may hear for some, from, from neighbors that are concerned about that, but the board can weigh those, those considerations. I did, during the question period, I gave my opinion. I, I think the planners got it right. I think that they did not want pools, they expressly did not want pools in the R4 district. The other districts allow them. They're bigger lots, less dense uses. So that should be considered also in your deliberations. So those are the four variances I've highlighted. Mr. King, I'm sure will add on to the legal criteria for demonstrating and being able to vote favorably for the variance. Now, roll right into my general review comments. Item one, we've just asked that they provide the flood code information on the plan and conform to chapter 258 if it's applicable. Item number two, construction details must be provided for the permeable paving surfaces for 50% lot coverage credit. They are taking advantage of that, which is permitted in residential zones, but we would like to verify that the construction materials are appropriate. Three, we talked about, so habitable area. So they've not shown detailed floor area calculations. They've come up with a calculation. We can't verify it based on the information they provided, but they indicate the floor area ratio is 25.8%, where 28% is the maximum permitted. They're showing it complies. We would just like to verify that. So as a condition of approval, that information should be required. Under number four, I think the applicant has answered this during their testimony. So proposed usage of the garage structure conversion must be indicated. It appears that it may function as a pool house. We've seen a lot of those applications in, in the past. So we're just curious if that was the potential uses of that. We've heard that it's gonna be storage and a screened area. There's no improvements that are proposed other than what are already existing. Is that correct? Okay.
Correct.
And I ask for any habitable area to be identified. I don't think it meets our habitable definition, so therefore, I think that question has been answered. Okay, five. Grading information has been provided, which appears unsatisfactory. Runoff will impact adjoining properties in a neighborhood known for stormwater issues. A stormwater system should be provided and connected to roof gutters. Runoff must be directed towards the front and lot of the lot and not abutting properties. There is a new ordinance that requires for any pool or driveway that they have to provide a stormwater system. So I'm further conditioned that they have to comply with that new stormwater ordinance.
Mr. Arlos, is that true if there isn't a pool?
I'm sorry?
Suppose theoretically that we, we're gonna vote separately, and suppose they get the one variance for the addition, but not the variance for the pool, is the stormwater system still required?
Still valid.
Okay.
Yes. It's valid for pools. It's valid for new.
Driveways and parking areas?
Yeah. Still valid.
Craig, when you talk about the runoff, being that it's an in-ground pool, and they're displacing that area there, does that affect how that plan would be arranged, since you're now displacing water that would now, would run in that area or now is on the neighbors?
I mean, believe it or not, the pool actually functions as a mini drainage basin. When you have heavy rainfall, whatever your freeboard is, it can accommodate that water before it runs off. So I'm more worried about the other, more impervious surfaces, like the pool patio, surrounds, shed roofs, et cetera.
Okay.
Okay. Plan notes should be revised to indicate parking calculations in accordance with the RSIS for the bedrooms proposed. Can you confirm this is, there's a three-bedroom house?
Two-bedroom.
Three-bedroom.
Two-bedroom.
It will be three.
So the three, okay. So three-bedroom house requires two parking spaces. They are parking sufficiently, so there's no issue there. We'd just like the notes to be updated. Okay. One of the other issues that we have whenever we see pool development are the pool equipment locations. They typically have that droning noise that's continuous. So if it's up against neighbors' properties, so we would like to see those, that location has to be put on the plan, and they also must conform to the pool setbacks.
Craig, our plan is to put it in the garage.
Okay. So that's got to be shown on the plan as a condition of any approval. Eight is our standard condition that they have to comply with the pool safety, pool safety fencing requirements. Nine is a requirement that there's one street tree required. Existing street trees should be indicated, if there are any. See that, if there are any existing out there, you don't have to provide any. Ten is I ask for a landscaping and vegetation plan as a condition of approval. Eleven is our standard condition that sidewalk adjacent to the subject site will replace to satisfaction of the engineer. I also noticed while we're sitting here, your proposed driveway is 18-foot wide, and your curb cut is 16-foot wide. So you're gonna be required to increase the width of that to match your proposed driveway.
When we did, can I also just say when we did, you guys were, Cape May?
My fault.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Cape May was working on Pennsylvania Avenue all winter long, and when they did do the, the aprons, I did speak to the, the, the construction guys if they could widen that a little bit for me. So they did widen that. They said that was no problem.
Okay, so that should be reflected on your plan as a condition of approval. All right. The rest of these are standard conditions of approval. Item number 12 is to provide the inspection escrow, and your CO is tied to a satisfactory inspection. The 13 is compliance with the requirements to the Shade Tree Commission, Fire Department, Environmental Commission, and Public Works Department. We have received reviews from Fire Department recommending approval dated 4/5/23, Public Works recommended approval dated 4/12/23, and the Shade Tree recommended approval dated 4/5/20/23. None of, none of them had any comments.
We didn't get the environmental yet?
We did not get any environmental report. And sometimes they don't necessarily review these.
We only send them to planning board. We don't send them to zoning board, the zoning board one.
All right. 14, standard condition, they have to comply with any and all other state, county, and local approvals. 15 is for informational purposes. This is not located within the historic district. 16, they have to comply with any and all affordable housing requirements at the time of approval. Issuance of building permits or certificate of occupancy is applicable. And then finally, if the board grants approval, the applicant is required to submit six sets of revised compliance plans for the board engineer to review. That's a summary of my report. I'm happy to answer any questions the board has.
Craig, with the garage being converted to an outbuilding, right, can that be turned into a livable space by putting heat or air in it now that it's not considered a garage?
I think that would trigger habitable floor area issues, and then they're gonna be required to get a D variance.
Because now it's not considered a garage. I didn't know what.
Yeah, they're, they're right up against the floor area ratio requirement. So I think, you know, any significant addition to floor, like habitable space, would trigger another variance.
I made condition of approval number four to read, it will, it will be storage and not habitable space, because they agreed to that.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just looking for the.
What?
I was just looking at it to the future that maybe it was gonna be converted. That's why I was asking.
But there's gonna be additional approval that they're not. So they'd have to get permission to do that. It'd be expansion of a non-conforming use.
My other question was, is with the pool, is that a C or D variance?
With the pool?
Would that be a C or D variance?
I believe that's a D variance.
D variance.
Any other questions for Craig?
I have a question. We're allowed to heat and.
No, 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 we're good. We're good.
Come on. Come on, Craig.
Okay, at this time, we'd like to open it up to the public. Those within 200 feet can come forward. Okay, no one within 200 feet?
So we're gonna ask you to please say and spell your name, and then give me your address, and then I'll swear you in, okay?
Yeah, if you would, please.
So it's Ron Chopper, T U P P E R. My wife and I live at 1209 Cape May Avenue, but we own 1150 Pennsylvania, not 1152 Pennsylvania Avenue, across the street from Scott and Sarah's property.
Okay, Sarah, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth stuff you got?
I do.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I just wanted to make a couple of comments. One is Scott and Sarah are fantastic neighbors, and I believe they hold the characteristics that we would all want in a neighbor in Cape May. They certainly maintain their property extremely well, and honestly, make it, make it attractive to look at across the street. I would also say, you know, I've, I've seen the plan for this. I would also say, you know, I've seen the plan for this proposed addition, and I think it only enhances the streetscape. I think honestly, it looks like a fantastic addition to the neighborhood. I would say, as you walk through the Village Green, and you can kind of see all the twins typically have, as mine do as well, about a three-foot grass space between the two driveways of adjoining buildings. I'm a little envious, quite frankly, but the block that Scott and Sarah have has a very broad green space between the two driveways, which is the tip-off to the fact that they are indeed much larger lots, to my knowledge, than anywhere else in, you know, within the twins, within the quads, in the Village Green. So, I do think that this, that characteristics makes this kind of uniquely acceptable to grow in the way that they're, that they're proposing. And I just think, I think they're making a fantastic use of a existing building, which, while they keep it in great maintenance, is facing not all that attractive, you know, of a building. As I say, I have two of them, they're not all that attractive to begin with, and this certainly ups the game. I would also say, you know, I really believe that, I can only think of one person on the entire block that actually parks their car in the garage, that very far majority of people who live on that street use their garage for something other than parking, be its primary storage. And I'd also say, you know, the pool is not something that is, you know, right out, right out in front of everybody. It's not something that I feel like will detract in any way from the characteristics of the neighborhood. So, certainly strongly support their application.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else beyond 200 feet would like to speak?
Beyond 200, you ready?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Mary Carson-Schneider. I live at 1343 Pennsylvania Avenue. Purchased my house back in 2017, and pretty much gutted it and fixed it up. I can tell you, we have a lot of water issues in the back of our house, that we had to totally regrade, and so certainly concerned.
Excuse me one moment, can I get your address again? And Mr. King, did you want-
Can I swear you in, please?
Oh, sorry. 1343 Pennsylvania Ave.
Thank you.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth stuff you got?
I do.
Thank you.
So, I purchased my home in 2017 at 1343 Pennsylvania Avenue. We, my husband and I gutted the place, dealt with a lot of water issues in our, in our back of our yard, and my biggest concern, obviously, is not your property. I think it's spectacular. We've been doing, seeing a lot of really nice stuff done, as far as extensions and some changes to, you know, the porches, et cetera. My issue truly is the pool. I can tell you, I'm not happy now. I have a lovely neighbor, I really adore them, but it was not nice to come back from Florida to see two golf carts parked in their backyard. I can tell you that they have multiple people that come down every weekend to visit. If I had a pool in my backyard, I would get absolutely no sleep. I can hear them now through the party wall, let alone dealing with that in the back. I think in the zoning, specifically 525, I believe it's 12, besides the fact that it does say about the accessory structure, that if it's not listed, it should not be, it's not permitted, that was for a reason, and I think you're absolutely right regarding the planning, that they got that correct. Under the conditional uses, I guess, it talks about free of nuisance characteristics. This would clearly be a nuisance for anyone living in a semi-detached area, because although Scott and Sarah, I'm sure, are wonderful neighbors, I think we know a little bit about you, but, you know, the property, you may not rent that property, but if other people get pools in their back, that may rent, that'll be another disaster. I live at a 50, we're already at a 5,000 square foot, so we have a pretty nice-sized lot. I can't even imagine, you know, having a pool out back, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, my name is William Currie, C-U-R-R-I-E, 1363 Pennsylvania Avenue.
Sir, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth stuff you got?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Sort of reaffirm what Mary just talked about. I think what they've done to their property is wonderful, but I am concerned about pools for two reasons. One is the noise factor. I'm not worried about their pool, because that's two blocks from me, but I'm worried about other people in Village Green in the R4 area, putting pools in their backyards, similar to Snyder's property, mine's the same size as theirs, and I could imagine our neighbor who has a few kids, putting a pool in their backyard. I'm concerned about the noise factor. I'm also wondering, when they did all the work on Pennsylvania Avenue this past year, with redoing the streets and all, there was tremendous water issues there, because it's a swampy area. And that swampy area, I'm wondering, when you start digging into the ground, I'm not an engineer, but digging into the ground and doing that kind of work in a backyard, what is that going to do to our water table? I just don't know. I think it's something to be considered. So, that's just a concern I have. So, it's two factors, the noise factor, if my neighbors start putting pools in their area, and the second would be what's happening with the water tables there. Thank you.
Sir, what did you say your lot size was?
It should be 50 by 125.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else beyond? Okay, at this point, we will close it to the public? I take that back.
My name's Dave Kaplan, 1153 Pennsylvania Ave.
Sir, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth stuff you got?
Yes. So, I'm here to support Scott and Sarah Fisher. The pool idea, we bought the house back, my family, we've owned the house since 1979, and we were actually thinking about putting a pool in. I know there's all different restrictions, but I think it's a good idea. Them, they're an older couple, I don't think they're having any kids, and he has, you know, some stuff going on, and, yeah, I don't see any issue at all. It's not a big pool, it's not like they're going to have a diving board, and there's, they have 19 and 18-year-old kids there, they're an older couple. The pool's, it can't be a big pool, it's a small pool, they're going to go in it, sit in it, cool down, take a chill, off and get out. They're not doing, you know, I don't see anything bad with it, but that's all I really have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name's Tom Lederer, that's Thomas, L U D E R E R, 1200 Illinois Avenue.
Can you repeat that, please? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Tom Lederer, L U D E R E R, 1200 Illinois Ave.
Correct.
Sir, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth stuff you got?
I do. Just came here to, I heard there was a variance, I came to see what it was, and I have nothing against you or your pool. However, I was going to keep my mouth shut, but now it seems, my fear was, is that once a pool goes in, everybody's going to want a pool. It's going to change the character of the neighborhood. I bought in the Village Green, I lived in Seattle all my life, when my family comes to visit me, they're shocked that not only can they park on Pennsylvania Avenue, I'm sorry, Illinois Avenue, they can park on Reading. There's no traffic, there's no noise, it's a quiet residential area, and that's why I moved here. If we start adding pools, besides water table issues, Village Green was basically built on a marsh, according to my neighbor who grew up in the Village Green before there were houses. So, my fear is, everybody's going to want a pool. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, at this time, we'll close it to the public.
I just want to make a couple comments to the rest of the board. I think it's a very dense area, and I think we have to be careful what we're allowing into this area, because of the fact, these homes are so close to each other. It was not permitted for a reason, when they were built, to allow for the density of this area. I think we have to, it's going to be a huge impact for the neighborhood. It was a campus style for a reason, to allow for affordable housing in that area, and I just know that a lot of people are buying homes and knocking down smaller homes around town, and putting in pools just for rental properties, because rentals want pools. And I think a lot of homes in the Village Green area are rentals, and this would make them more desirable if they could all put pools in them. And I think that would create noise, and would not be, would be detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay, any other comments?
Okay. Just a couple words in summation, before the board votes, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
I have it.
I understand when you please, the property isn't here.
Oh, you got to call, but there's no one there, you would have to call, there might be a phone in there that you can call for 9500.
Just the first 911 at a zoning board hearing ever. Okay, so, I just want to summarize and maybe address some of the concerns of the neighbors. We put on some testimony, but I think that the point was missed, so I want to emphasize that. And I do agree with Mr. Harless. I do agree with him, and there were some comments that the planners ultimately got it right when they said no pools in the R4, because they're looking at Village Green. What do you see when you look at Village Green? The vast majority, and I think it's clear when you look at what I handed out, A1, it shows you, we don't need a mathematical calculation to see that the absolute vast majority are 40-foot lots, and then you have the quads, that are actually four square, little square lots together. Now, no one could put a pool on the quad lot, because there's simply literally no room. There are one unique feature about this property and this side of the street, and that is that they are larger lots. Now, when they originally planned this, and they said no pools in the R4, they have to zone by district. Otherwise, you can't pick out, well, this lot's a little bit bigger, so we're going to let this happen here. This lot's a triangle on the corner, so we're going to let a couple more things happen there. That would be spot zoning. You can't do that. You'd be challenged on that, and rightfully so. So, you zone by a district. Now, Cape May's not a grid, a total grid. It has unique characteristics to those grids, to the areas, to the zones. Some of the streets are at an angle. Here, they plan for some different-sized lots, some different-sized buildings. So, what happens when you impose the zoning ordinance over the entire zone, and you're not allowed to spot zone? What happens to the properties that are a little bit unique? How are they addressed? Well, that is the exact very function of this board, the zoning board of adjustment. You come here, because this board grants that variance relief for the unique circumstances that hopefully I made clear, and you can see it from this. As I'm sitting here, I'm looking, there are six structures on their side of the street. Behind them, there's nine structures. Across the other side of the street, seven. Next block down, seven. To the south, seven, seven, seven. And they're all 40-foot lots, some are bigger lots. This is 6,250 square feet. As Mr. Fenwick points out, that lot, and anywhere in Cape May, you could have a pool. So, we understand, Mr. Harless is correct, the planners were correct, no pools in the R4. It does make sense because of the general neighborhood scheme, but there are properties that are uniquely situated. And I don't know how, I don't know why, I don't know if somebody changed course as they were developing this area, but somehow, we wind up with the block that is six structures with 50-foot lots, and everything else is predominantly 40-foot. So, we put on the testimony to give the board some comfort, and two of the neighbors who raised that, well, if you let these folks do it, you're going to have to let everybody do it, because for same reasons, they'd have the same reasons. That's not the case. And Mr. King pointed out that these properties are uniquely situated, they're a little bit bigger.
I did not point that out. Did you ask me, I did not make any factual statement about what lots are there?
No, I don't mean to impart any factual statement. He drew some, attempted to draw some testimony from Mr. Harless to that effect. So, there's no runaway train here. There wouldn't be. If the board granted the variance for the pool, and the board recognized that it's because of the unique size on this block, that they're 50-foot lots, and all the other factors that we testified to, there's no potential runaway train, because you're only looking at five other houses in the entire Village Green that are similarly situated, that could possibly come in for the same variance. So, the concern, legitimate concern of the neighbors, that, well, if you let them have it, you got to let everyone else have it, really isn't in play here. So, we heard from Mr. Fenwick, it's 25% bigger, it's 6,250 square feet, a lot suitable for pools in other areas of Cape May, we're meeting the pool requirements. So, it's very difficult for me to understand, if you're meeting the setbacks, and setbacks are buffers, and buffers are designed to isolate, insulate, protect the adjoining properties from the use that's permitted in certain zones, which is 10 feet, and we meet that here, it's tough to then argue, well, why would it be a nuisance over here and not over here, if you're meeting all of the same setback requirements? So, I don't think that's, I think it's a misplaced concern, because if you can meet it, you can, you're ensuring by the own standards set forth in the zoning ordinance of how to protect adjoining properties, and that is that you meet those, you meet those requirements. So, those are our reasons, pointed out the unique characteristics, and the board can hang its hat on that, so to speak, and not be concerned that it's going to be a runaway train with pools proliferating through the area, which I agree with Mr. Harless, may not be appropriate in the R4. So, you're the zoning board of adjustment, we're asking you to make that adjustment, to recognize that this property's a little bit different, that it doesn't really fall into that category of the vast majority of properties located in this zone, that the designers thought you shouldn't, you shouldn't have a pool. It is a little bit different. So, regarding the garage, it really truly is a thing, that when everybody else is one-story around you, the two-story property really is intrusive into the adjoining properties. I did a subdivision in Lower, and we had three cottages, single-story, in the Villas, and the neighbors came out in support, didn't ask them to, didn't solicit, they, don't let them build a two-story house. I live next door, they're going to be looking right down into my backyard. Everybody's one-story, everybody's on an equal playing field, nobody's looking into anybody else's backyard, you have your privacy in your backyard. On top of all of the testimony that Mr. Fenwick gave about the design and whatnot, and how it fits in with the character and feel of the neighborhood, a small trade-off to block this garage building that already exists, it's already there, and we heard from another one of the neighbors that said, in reality, no, he's aware of one person in that area that actually parks a car in their garage. What happens? We all know what happens, you saw the picture. Their storage, they fill up with storage, especially when you have a big old long driveway where you can park two, three, or more cars in there. You're going to use that for storage, even more so because they're small houses. So, Mr. Fenwick testified, no harm from that, the structure's there, it's being used- So, Mr. Fenwick testified, no harm from that, the structure's there, it's being used for storage in a screened-in porch. That's the way it's been used, there's been no harm from that. So the trade-off to block that off, to where you can't pull a car in, in exchange for the good design and keeping it one-story, I think that's a classic C2 argument, where the benefits outweigh the detriments in favor of granting the variance for all the benefits that it brings to the street, to the community, as we heard the neighbor testify, fixing it up, making it look nice, bringing some variation in. So I hope you folks see it that way, and hope to hear a favorable vote from you. Thank you.
Okay, there are two, there are several variances, but they fall into two categories. The first relates to the garage, which is now going to be an other accessory building, and that garage is not changing. It is just that when it's not a garage anymore, there are different size limitations, so that same structure now doesn't meet the limitations for an accessory, for a other accessory structure. That is a C2 variance, where you're gonna balance the project as a whole against any detriments that you see. So they believe that the benefits substantially outweigh any detriments, and they have given what I would consider sufficient testimony. It's your balancing, it doesn't mean you have to grant it or anything, it just means that there is testimony in the record to show that purposes of zoning are being advanced, including architectural benefits that they outlined, and they've asserted that they substantially outweigh any detriment, and that there's no negative impact on the zone plan and zoning ordinance. So for the garage, which is essentially their addition that they wanna do, the addition in the garage, that is a C2 variance. I wanna repeat, the addition doesn't require a variance, correct?
Correct.
It's the fact that that addition is cutting off the garage, so the parking is going out front, and that renders that other building to be an other accessory. So we're gonna vote on that as a C2 variance separately. That requires a simple majority. We are then going to vote on the use variance, and that relates to the pool. That is a very different variance, that is a D variance. It's not a little D variance like a FAR or an expansion of a non-conforming use, it's a real D variance. So that D variance has a certain standard. That requires a vote of five of the seven, we have seven members voting, Ms. Keenan?
Yes.
Five of the seven have to vote in the affirmative to pass that. You always need to meet the negative criteria, meaning no negative impact on the zone plan and zoning ordinance, or on the neighbors. Not no impact, but there can't be a substantial negative impact. But also, they need to show the positive criteria, and the positive criteria is different for a D variance. Positive criteria for a D variance requires special reasons. Now, special reasons are a fancy way of saying the purposes of zoning, which are the things you usually hear, but there's a different element to it on a use variance, and that is to do with site suitability. I read it earlier, we're gonna read it again. And I have my contacts on, so I could wear my mask, but now I can't see anything that's less than three feet from me. Okay. In the context of positive criteria, site suitability is not concerned with ordinance zoning criteria, but is intended, but instead focuses on, one, why the location of the site within the municipality or region is particularly suited to the use despite the zoning, and/or, two, what unique characteristics of the site itself make it particularly appropriate for the proposed use rather than the uses permitted? So you need to look at why this site is particularly well-suited to have a pool. The testimony you received from the applicant is that they believe that because their lot is one of, well, I wanna talk for a second. Mr. Galzounis said something in his closing, remember closings are argument, they are not factual. So when, I think at one point, he said it's one of five properties that have this condition. I don't know that it's exactly what he meant to say. I think he means that there's five on this block that are 50 feet. I don't think that he meant to say that there aren't others that are 50 feet, but I don't...
Maybe six, six structures.
There could be only another five that could be...
Yeah, I think he said there'd be another five that would have this condition, but I'm not, I'm not sure that the evidence, I know what he meant, I'm not saying he tried to mislead you, I think he was talking about that, that block. I'm not clear on how many 50-foot properties there are in the zone. I asked that a couple of times, and I never got a solid factual answer on that. I know two people testified, and they felt that they had 50-foot lots, so that's a little bit in the air. But the board has heard a lot of evidence on that, and I'm not saying Mr. Galzounis meant to mislead you at all, I know exactly what he meant, he was talking about this stretch. But it's for you to review and think about whether this site is unique enough, not to be the only one, but whether it's unique enough that makes you comfortable that this lot is particularly well-suited to allow a pool where others aren't permitted in the R4 zone, and weigh that against Mr. Harless's testimony, who acknowledged that this is somewhat unique in the area, he said that, your engineer said that, but he also said that he thought that the people who did the R4 knew what they were doing as well. So you're weighing all that, and you're, that's why you get the big bucks, is to make that decision. So you're reviewing whether you think that this is, this site is particularly well-suited for the proposed pool, okay? And that's, that's where you are. So that's the decision you need to make, we're gonna do a separate vote. So the first motion I'd recommend being made is whether, is a C2 variance analysis on the, the...
Garage.
...structure in the rear as an accessory building. And I do think that if you vote in favor of that, then I do think they can make their addition. Doesn't mean they can make the pool, but I do think that the, the way to think about this is if you approve the garage changing character back there into accessory structure, I think you're considering the addition as part of that. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay?
Rich, I just have a question. Is there a reason for, since it's a D variance, that more neighbors weren't notified at further distances? Or is it just not...
It's 200 feet for a variance, whether it's a D variance or not.
Okay.
Now, now, understand that, hold on, there's a published notice that everyone in the town can know about, and there's an agenda available that everyone in the town can know about. The notice you're talking about is the 200-foot notice, which is an actual piece of mailing that goes to them. But this applicant has satisfied all of their notice requirements, and it's evidenced by the fact that people from more than 200 feet spoke tonight. So, and I think that they've done what they needed to do in that regard. And they have put on sufficient evidence for you to weigh, so, you know, it's just how you're gonna vote on the two items, okay? All right, so the first vote I'd recommend being made is a motion to approve the variance, the bulk variances under the C2 standard for the rear accessory structure.
Okay. Someone wanna make the motion?
Make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is that Mr. Zexer?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Knatch, seconded by Mr. Zexer. Mr. Ledwin?
Yes.
Mrs. Knatch?
Yes.
Ms. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Wash?
Yes.
Mr. Zexer?
Yes.
Mr. Cattado?
Yes.
Mr. Vannudo?
Yes.
Thank you.
The second motion that I recommend being made is a motion to grant a use variance for the accessory use of a pool in the rear of the home. That vote must be approved by five of the seven members to pass. It will not affect the approval of the first vote, and that is the standard of the D standard that I gave you previously about site suitability. Okay, so that is the, that's the motion I recommend being made, how you vote is up to you.
Okay, would someone make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Knatch, seconded by Mr. Vannudo. Mr. Wash?
No.
Ms. Sheen?
No.
Mrs. Knatch?
No.
Mr. Ledwin?
No.
Mr. Zexer?
No.
Mr. Cattado?
No.
Mr. Vannudo?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you. Good job, counsel. Mr. Fenwick, thank you. Craig? All right. Moving right along, next up, next up we have Nancy Tiberzio. Did I say that right? Okay, 1260 Cape May Avenue Block, 1134 lots 11, 12, and 13. Please come forward. Okay?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is Ron Galzounis, appearing on behalf of Nancy Tiberzio this evening. I have Nancy's daughter to my left, Wendy Caparonis. She's appearing on her behalf, and she's taken an instrumental role in the renovation of this property and these proceedings this evening. Of course, that property is 1260 Cape May Avenue, and the proposal this evening is to seek permission to reconstruct the existing pool patio into a configuration that we believed existed in the past, which will result in a substantial reduction of coverage, but will still require a variance. We're also proposing to demolish the existing pool shed that's located on the property line and replace that with a conforming, what we're calling a pool pavilion. Also, to expand the front entrance of the building with a covered roof over the entranceway that requires some, it will result in a little additional coverage and slight intrusion into the front yard setback, but it doesn't come out any further than the existing structure. I also have here Mr. Jacob Zurilla. He is a landscape architect, and will be providing our expert testimony this evening, so if we can have Mendy and Jacob sworn in. Jacob, J-A-C-O-B, Zurilla, Z-U-R-I-L-L-A, and Wendy Caparonis, C-A-P-E-R-O-N-I-S. So, I wanna, I wanna take Wendy first, because I think it's very important to get the history of the property, so we have this in context, what's happening, why it's happening, and so we can understand it a little bit better. So Wendy, your connection to this property, your mother's connection to the property?
So, my grandparents, Adele and Peter Tiberzio, they, they're both deceased, but they owned the property for over 50 years. They bought it from Tom Brodesser, who was a local architect and builder, so the house has been in our family for over 50 years.
Now, when, when he had it, how big was the property? Was the whole...
Well, my grandparents were very into real estate, and they owned the arcades in town, but they also owned a lot of stores on the mall as well as real estate. And when they first bought the property, they continued to buy the entire lot, so as they saved up, they bought more property along Cape May Avenue. So at one point, they owned like four different lots on that same block.
And then, they were sold off?
Yes.
At some point, the pool in the backyard was put in? That was probably prior to 2000?
The pool was, when I was a little girl, I have pictures when I was like two years old outside by the pool, so the pool was original from, I believe, when they bought the house, or when they bought it from Tom Brodesser, but I'm not positive. But I do know that they owned a bunch of the properties, and then they sold them throughout my life.
Your grandfather sold them off one by one?
Exactly.
And then there was, I guess, final remaining was a very large side yard to the property?
So we had a lot next to us, you know, we had a large yard, and we had a lot next to us, and, you know, they were talking about subdividing, taking some of our property and making two lots next to us. And I, of course, didn't want them to do that, I loved having a big yard in Cape May and having the big pool and...
This is your grandfather doing this?
Yeah, this is my grandfather. But they subdivided, and they took a lot of our property, and they were able to sell it to, like, if you Google our address, 1260 Cape May Avenue, it's actually the neighbor's house, it's not our house, because I guess that was 1260, and then they re, you know...
Cape May Avenue.
Cape May Avenue. Yep.
So, your mother eventually inherited the property?
So, my grandmother passed away in September 2021, and my mom inherited the property shortly after that, but we had already been talking about renovating the property.
And when she inherited, the side yard on Cape May Avenue had been subdivided off, and I think there's a house there now?
Yes, correct.
And were there renovations to the pool deck over the years, the backyard, that you could recall?
Yeah, definitely different, you know, we have some pictures, and was able to kinda jog my memory, but, you know, I'm not sure about the pool house itself. You know, it really only stores the equipment, and some pool floats and that kinda stuff.
So, I'm gonna, I wanna go through the pictures one time, so, let's get Mr. Zerelli, can you briefly put your credentials on the record?
Sure. My name's Jacob Zerella. I have a master's degree in landscape architecture undergrad in architecture from Temple University. I've worked with, I am Dynasties Design Builder, we're a consultant, and we do, I do some work on my own in actual implementation. In this case, I am just consulting, I know Wendy from Philadelphia, I live in Philadelphia, and just as somebody, since the issue at hand is about permeability and plants, and how we can make this property, you know, more attractive and more compliant to the regulation.
And you prepared the landscape plan?
Yes, I prepared the landscape and the, planting plan and coverage plan, and I also have some additional, just with the, what's the current, current survey, or the survey with the current plants, and kind of what we're going towards, and, you know, just a total, holistic approach that we're taking on this property to return it more to...
Hold on, Mr. Galzounis, can we, can we just qualify as what he's an expert of first, before we get into this?
Right, so your, your credentials as your profession?
My profession in...
Professional credentials?
In landscape design, and plant suitability for the environment, and...
Are you a landscape, are you, in New Jersey, you can be a licensed?
I am not a licensed landscape architect in New Jersey, no.
Okay.
But I'm a landscape...
In Pennsylvania?
In Pennsylvania, yeah.
You're a licensed, you're, Pennsylvania has a landscape architect license?
I, I'm, I do not have the license, but I'm practicing. It's not, it's not required state-to-state to have a full licensure in landscape architecture.
Okay, so you wanna be qualified as an expert in landscape design?
In design, yes.
Okay. So, let me, if, I could ask the board members to open the application under exhibit...
Hold on, Mr. Galzounis, I gotta make sure someone accepts him as an expert. Hold on, Mr. Galzounis, I gotta make sure someone accepts him as an expert before we go to the next thing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Do you accept him as an expert in landscape design?
I do.
Where that is, okay.
Exhibit D. If you could turn to exhibit D. And these are the aerial image from the county tax site as far back as we could locate, starting in about 2000, which is the black and white one. Kind of black and white, greenish. All right, so if everybody's on that page, Jacob and Wendy, this is the year 2000. So, Wendy, do you remember what the back pool deck consisted of at that time? Lawn with a perimeter patio around the pool?
Yep, and you can see there's a little shed there, but you can also see how big the yard is with the fence going all the way.
And you're pointing to the side yard on Cape May Avenue?
To the side yard on Cape May Avenue, yep. And then the pool there, and then the pavers around it, and then the shed that houses the pool equipment.
So, we'll turn to the next page, which is 2005. Now Wendy, that's pretty much the same thing, but as time went on, I guess, technology got a little bit better and we have a clearer picture.
Exactly.
So, that's a concrete apron around the existing pool?
Yep.
And that's the pool shed there?
Yes.
And I can see we have a very large side yard?
Exactly.
Okay. So, let's turn to the next one. If you look at the top, the date's up there, March of 2007. So, Wendy, looks like there's some major construction going on around the pool, and they have the entire perimeter torn up. And do you recall what they were doing? And Jacob, do you think they're covering that with pavers or?
Yeah. I mean, it looks like the entire back portion is under construction, and they are working.
2007, your grandfather or grandmother?
They both were, yes, they were both alive at that time.
And next page, 2010. Now, Jacob, maybe you can opine on this. It looks like it's pretty much 100% coverage back there around the entire pool perimeter.
Covered, it looks like the construction was they put in the hot tub to... At the right side of the pool, if you're looking at it from on Cape May Avenue. And the, it looks entirely covered from, you know, edge to edge of the home.
And of course, we still have the vacant side lot.
Vacant side lot is, yeah.
Now, that's 2010. Turn the next page to 2012. Looks like they did some additional work and did something back there. Landscape, it looks like stone or pavers or something.
Yeah, pavers, it looks like they pulled some pavers up, and they, you know, obviously added a fence, and the yard became smaller.
All right, turn to 2013. Pretty much the same thing. It looks either stone or gravel or pavers or something.
It's, yeah.
Any opinion on that?
It's definitely coverage.
Definitely coverage?
Yeah.
Okay, and I think at this point now, the side yard disappears. Back in 12, 2012, we see a fence appear, shrinking dramatically your side yard, right Wendy?
Correct.
And that's where it is now today, right?
It is.
All right, 2016, pretty much the same thing. We can see the differentiation between the coverage, and it looks like there's a house now in what used to be your side yard.
Yes.
2019, same thing. And 2022, this must have been like, when did you take over your mom?
We started construction March of 2022.
Okay. And, all right, so that's what you started with, right?
Yep.
Now, you want to, and Jacob, I guess we can pass out your, the landscaping plan.
There's a few different, there's an updated site plan. Since the one that was from the application, Wendy and I have referred it. We've kind of, there's a few concerns that were addressed.
And you could just take us through that.
Is that a whole pocket?
Yes.
Yeah.
Two will be the existing, existing survey, the survey with existing vegetation, three within the planting plan, and four will be the proposed illustrations of the pavilion.
A3 is what?
The planting plan.
A4 is what?
Is the proposed, just an illustration of proposed pavilion. An illustration of the proposed pavilion, elevation, just to illustrate what the... There's, yeah.
No problem.
All right, Jacob, do you want to, as you're using one of these exhibits, refer to it, let the board members know what you're looking at?
Sure.
And take us through the design of the pool area.
So, the overall, we were striving to go back to the 2005 footprint, and something that's more realistic, knowing that, you know, it is a large lot and it was just over 1,800 square, 18,000 square feet, but we needed to shrink it. So, all the, you know, it went from half coverage, we've worked it down to about 37. We've shrunken to meet the setbacks of both. The existing shed doesn't meet setback requirements, it's right on the property line. So, we've proposed moving in the pavilion once the shed is demolished. Is one of the main things for this proposal. The other was bringing in the pavers to meet the 10-foot requirement closest to the pool on the backside of the lot. We've also placed the pool equipment next to the house, closer to the pavilion, which was another concern, is where that equipment would go. And that will be replacing the existing equipment, which is in the shed. All of these pavers will be permeable. Looked at Teko Block as a manufacturer who does significant, you know, it's a pretty simple, you know, aggregate base with sand that is easy to maintain and is very effective. And with the sand subsoil, it's, you know, a great opportunity to use permeable pavers. They'll be used on the walk, the drive, and the front walk as well.
So, you started with 50% of coverage?
Yeah, it was about 50%, depending on... Yeah, it was, and I think that's due just to the shrinkage of the lot and when it, where it was, and when, you know, when it's covered, it was significantly bigger. I don't have access to what the exact lot size was then 20 years ago, but...
So, you're pretty minimal here. You have enough for your drive, driveway to park. You have a simple walkway to the backyard and a simple walkway off of Cape May Avenue?
Yes.
Up to the front door. And around the, do you want to have pavers around the perimeter of the pool for a safety factor?
It's considered a safety factor, just, yeah, to be able to, be able to access all parts of the pool. And it's just, you know, some, for maintenance to keep out debris and other, it's, you know, we have... And then introducing, why we've put in is the additional planting. Because the planting is, I mean, whether or not, you know, the board considers fur absorption, but planting beds do absorb more water and are more permeable than turf. And so, that was part of our plan, you know, just increasing that space would, you know, if not in the letter of the law, it would, in the spirit of our attempt to, you know, be more proactive in runoff absorption.
So, the current conditions, there's a shed, pool shed, right on the property?
It's right on the fence.
So, that's coming down?
It's right to the right of the pool on the back. You don't see it.
So, you're eliminating that nonconformity?
Yeah.
And you're also creating that required 10-foot buffer from the pool and pool patio?
Yes.
To the property line? And the pool equipment will be very far away from?
Yes, it'll be, it'll be up against the house, adjacent to the stairs to the master bedroom.
So, design-wise, is this a much better design for the home and for the area? Because I know we have drainage considerations and whatnot that we'll be complying with?
Yes.
Than what existed in the past?
Yeah, in the past, I mean, it was, you know, from looking at, so number two, the existing plants is on the, shows a bit of the exist, how the property was paved before. And it's a lot, I mean, the entire backyard was basically imperious. And so, this is, you know...
So, would you consider this sort of the minimum amount of pavers required to get that access around?
Yeah, and to maintain and your access to all areas of the pool and to, you know, just keep contiguous, you know, it's, that is about... We've worked it down to the optimum, and that's what the, one of the main, you know, why we handed out a new site survey, was just in, you know, in working to meet those requirements.
And you also prepared the landscaping plan. What is, what was on the property now versus what you're proposing to add?
So, on the property now, we did a survey of the plants. I mean, there's, you know, you, it's a... Then you have your silver maple shade trees, which are not going to be touched. But then you have your gem boxwoods, you know, Japanese false cypress, Japanese barberry, burning bush, you know, things that are considered by the state of New Jersey as, you know, invasive species. You know, the crepe myrtles and things are more ornamental, lily magnolia. They're not necessarily, you know, a detriment, but they're non-native, and they don't really service the environment of Cape May.
So, you're adding, it looks like you're adding landscaping all along the back and side property line?
Yes.
That's there?
Yeah, which...
How tall is that going to grow? Is that going to serve as an additional buffer?
It'll be an additional buffer. The smartest guy is the arborvitae cultivar. It's not, you know, your Green Giant, it's going to get 60 feet tall. They top out about 20, you know, if they're in the source... I mean, it's soil that they will, like, they'll probably get about 20, 24 feet at full maturity.
Is that a substantial improvement compared to what existed before your landscaping plan for the overall property?
Yes.
And the pool, you can't see the pool from, it's directly behind the house. You can't see this from the street, can you?
The pool's really not visible. And you could probably see it from the second floor of the neighbor on Cape May Avenue. That would be, I mean, the only way, and with the, if you're putting the arborvitae in, would block, you know, most of that as well.
Okay. Now, you also provided the elevation of the proposed pavilion?
Yes.
And that's going to replace that sort of pool house that's there now on the property line? Now, you selected something that remains open to open air, light and space. You can see through it?
See through it, yeah. It's not a, you know, it's a minimal, it's minimal structure is really, you know, with providing the shade and, you know, rain coverage that you would desire, you know, that if you have a, you know, for an outdoor space, that would be, you know, more seasonal than just, you know, good weather.
And this is the design that you, we would be committed to constructing in the backyard if?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a kit from a provider. It's not a, you know, custom, it's a very straightforward.
Something to provide shade and?
Provide shade, yeah.
Do you see, and any of the, any that you designed? You designed the backyard?
Mm-hmm.
Patio pavers, the renovation of the pool deck, the landscaping. Anything that you see as a harm or detriment resulting from that to the surrounding properties of the community?
No, and I've been, you know, we've been very discussing plants. We've, you know, trying to, it's all Cape May natives. Lots of things that are in service to the local, you know, birds and, you know, just the environments. The beech plums, the Yucca's native to the beaches, you know, the Viburnum, the Oakleaf hydrangea. These are all things that have local, you know, environmental, you know, specificity.
Okay, now Wendy, you did some construction on the house with permits to add a second floor, correct?
Correct, yes.
And as part of that, you wound up having to do some renovations to the front of the structure?
Yep.
Could you tell us what happened there and what it is that you changed on the front? And I'm going to hand out this before and after picture of the front.
Yeah. Perfect, thank you. So, we knew that this was going to be, when we were designing and we had our architect work on our plan, we knew that it was going to be a two-process plan. We knew that we were going to be able to submit for the second floor and the addition and not have to go for a variance. So, we did that initially, we were able to get our permit and start building. And in that timeframe, we worked with our architect to come up with a plan for the front of the house. It was very, you know, you could see both pictures. The top is what it currently looks like, the bottom is what it looked like prior to our construction. So, it's a very, you know, 50s vibe, and we really love, we wanted to make this house feel more like Cape May, but we really didn't want to, you know, a lot of people were like, demo it, take it all down, and, you know, our family has a lot of ties to this house. It's, you know, the only house in my family or in my life that I've been going to every summer along with holidays and everything. So, we really loved this house and really wanted to give it what it deserves, and that was a makeover and a facelift. And part of Cape May being, you know, everyone has the front porches, and I love the Victorian houses in Cape May. We really wanted to try and create that for this house. I love a good front porch, and we wanted to do that, but it took longer with designing it and everything to kind of come up with that. But once we did, we kind of held off on the front porch, and then there was all this water that was coming into the house. And the ceiling in the home is like a 20-foot pitched wood ceiling. And the ceiling was all getting ruined because we didn't put the porch on and the way that it kind of, you know, this, the front triangle lays on the back outside of the house, and it was basically water was coming in, and there was really no way to not have that, according to what my builder was telling me, that we needed to put the front porch on. So, we put the porch on, knowing that obviously we're in the process of going through this variance. We didn't lay any ground, you know, tile or, you know, a foundation on it yet. And have been obviously waiting for this variance. We haven't put pillars up or anything like that, which we hopefully are planning on doing. But we really felt that this was the best look for the house to really have it, you know, fit in on the street.
So, Jacob, you hand out, I just handed out, the second page and third page are two surveys.
Yes.
The first survey, or the last page, the survey by Dan Guzzi, Dante Guzzi. That shows the, what I'll call, the copper roof porch. And that is just in the front. And then the second survey shows the porch that was constructed. So, the porch that was constructed is actually recessed a little further away from the front property line, correct?
Yes.
And it doesn't come out past the existing front of the house?
It does not.
The 23.7 feet remains the same. That's a little point, tenth of a foot difference between the two surveys. So, I guess from a design standpoint, getting rid of that copper roof, I don't even know what kind of design. Wendy says it's 50s, but that looks more 80s type thing. I can't see anything molesting that's not Cape May than that. It's always puzzled me, as long as that's been. But it's gone now.
It's gone.
So, Jacob, from a design perspective, the benefit of getting rid of that and having this design, does that outweigh making this front porch a little bit wider in order to get that V roof in there?
Yeah, I mean, the roof, I think it's a, you know, a huge improvement just on, you know, on the curb appeal of the house that, you know, it's way more in tune with the rest of the house and, you know, just the neighborhood. That is, I think, the only large cop, orange copper roof I've seen in Cape May.
Yeah.
It was very, we had other plans that the architect were giving us, and they just, it looked horrible with just keeping that little just roof over the front door. It was just, it just didn't, the house is so long and wide that you really needed something bigger, and having a porch and making it more Cape May was really the look we were going for. And it just, it kept, like, all the plans she kept doing, I was like, no, 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 no.
Yeah, and I see where there's some symmetry there between the two wings of the house, left and right, which have a hip roof, A-frame roof?
Right.
And your triangle in the center.
Yep.
So, if you look at it, you really start to see that it's thought through.
Well, it was supposed to be a little higher and have windows, the back part, but that the architect didn't give our new plan to the builder, so...
So, if I heard you correctly, you put the roof on, of course you had to, but you didn't do any other work. You stopped there.
Correct.
So, there's dirt under there right now.
Dirt, yes.
Right? Right? And you're here to ask the board if you can fill that in to make that covered so that you can stand on it, walk on it, sit.
Sit on it.
Sit there.
Yes.
And that would be a little bit more coverage. Do we know what that number is, Jacob?
About 200 feet. It's an 11, it's two pieces of 11 by 8 foot, so, 88 and.
And that, that wouldn't be out past, that's under the roof area.
It would not, yeah. And it doesn't affect the setback.
From a plant perspective, vegetation perspective, a good place to live as a plant?
Under there, no.
You, right, so we.
You wouldn't get much, yeah.
Okay, so not, not a good, and do you need anymore, does that, would that add to the house, to the neighborhood at all if that was landscaped? There's landscaping in front of it, correct?
Yeah, there'll be landscaping in front of it and we've discussed, actually, that's where the boxwoods are going to be moved. We're going to use those, they're all, you know, and push them in and then we'll have some, you know, ITA and the holly.
So there's no detriment there. So we're here this evening asking for a front yard setback because this addition goes out 11 feet, the front porch, 11 feet on either side, to be clear. But it actually sits back further than the copper roof.
Yes.
But comes wider and it's not further out than the front of the building.
Yep, yes, it is.
So design-wise, anything offensive, design-wise, to the neighborhood seeing that, having that configured like that?
No, I think updating the house is, you know, it benefits everyone in the neighborhood. It's really, you know, just going to increase the property value here and everywhere, you know, it's a, I think, a very nice minimal design from the architect.
And just to jump back to the pool for a minute, you got the review letter from Mr. Hurle who identified, we were over 10 feet close, too close to the property line.
With the pavings.
With the pavers.
Yeah.
You saw that and you cut that back to comply.
Yeah, we just, it was, I think I was at nine foot six before and we just kind of nipped it in a little bit to comply. Because as I had read it, it was the pool itself is where I was, it was my interpretation, that it wasn't the paving. It was the actual pool setback.
So there was, it was also floated a little bit, well, maybe get rid of the pavers, but then it was determined that was not necessarily a good idea because you want to have physical access to be able to get around that pool. Somebody should be drowning in there or something, God forbid. You got to be able to run around, have access to it, correct?
Yeah, it's definitely.
And cleaning.
Yeah, for cleaning and for just, yeah, and it's open, you know, and this was, we discussed, you know, access to all the pool, keeping that and really improving the space without increasing the concrete. And, you know, and just having great sightlines. I mean, that's why, you know, it was helpful moving the pavilion and to kind of give you a better view of the pool. You know, I think it's, it really creates a better, smaller space for enjoying the pool itself.
And you did the best you could with what, the circuit, because the pool's already there, the house is already there.
Yeah, I, to get to, I mean, if you removed every single paver and, and then you would get to 30%.
But you'd have to get rid of, you'd have to get rid of all the pavers.
Every last one of them, including the driveway, but then you can't, I mean, it's just one of those things. Because no matter what the driveway, you're still going to be impervious.
So it's a good point. You're going to have a variance here, no matter what you do. The question is how much you feel that you've struck that balance. This is really the minimum necessary to get around the pool and to have that space between the pool and the house to be utilized.
Yes, yeah.
Not over, not an overreach, not over the top, not over, not overbuilt.
No, yeah, we've been trying to be, you know, to keep, you know, a subtle design that really, you know, works to meet the variance as much as possible. It will, it's, you know, this has been, as you've seen, a few variations and I'm working through and it, I mean, it did get to the point, somebody, that it was so, so much concrete that it was obvious that, you know, it needs to be shrunken back down.
And we went through the photographic history there, bringing this back to when, I think it was probably 2005 was the best image of what it originally looked like.
Yeah.
What was put in.
Yeah, and which, you know, and it's.
So this, this design, in your opinion, is very, very close to that.
Yes, it's, it's, concrete-wise, it's very, and it's just increasing, you know, the planting, which is, you know, a detriment, it is a, you know, benefit to, you know, the community.
I'm going to leave it at that if the board members have any questions for Mr. Zerilla or.
I have some housekeeping questions, just in general with dimensions, because you introduced some, the surveys and the plans and myself and Mr. King have to craft the resolution so that it reflects what you're asking for. And I'm not sure yet.
Okay.
Okay, so it sounds to me like you indicated the pool patio setback variance you're going to comply with.
Yes.
Yes.
10-foot setback.
Yes.
Okay. So I, is the pool itself being replaced?
No.
You're maintaining the existing pool?
Maintaining the existing pool. We are going to, like, obviously clean it, re-tile it.
Right.
And move the equipment.
Rehabbing the existing pool.
Exactly.
Okay, because Mr. de Blasio's survey has a dimension of 9.5 feet to the pool surface. And some of the other drawings don't, like, you, your drawings.
I mean, I was there today if, from the edge.
The Fulcrum plan shows 9 and change, so I just want to make sure that we're, what we know we're approving anyway.
I was there today and I, it's, it's 12 feet from the edge of the pool to the fence.
Okay.
It's, I mean, I just, I, you know, we walked, I, because it was, I.
I just want to make sure you're getting all the variances that you need to do what you want to do.
Yes.
And.
And there has been.
And our resolution and my report reflects it.
Yes, and I, we've been trying to, you know,
Okay.
to regulate everything and figure out what, because, you know, just the, there's different surveys.
There's discrepancies all over the place, two surveys and the proposed plans, so I'm just trying to make sure.
There is a little nook, like a seat, that maybe, I mean, that area 9.5, but the actual pool goes in, like, so it's pool and then there's like a seat.
What I'm advising you is that there's a 10-foot setback to the pool patio. And you're saying you can conform to that?
Yes.
So when I do a compliance review, I have to make sure that whatever you're doing has a 10-foot setback.
We good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's it, okay, so.
I think, I think that's a mistake. I mean, if you have a survey that says that you need a variance at 9.5 feet and you're keeping the same pool, if you're wrong about that, you have to do all this again.
Yeah, yeah, we should just.
The Guzzi survey, when I measured it, shows it further, so I'm not sure which is correct.
We unfortunately wound up with three surveys. This is the danger of having three surveys. And a lesson to everyone, me included, send a surveyor out to measure something, you know.
Right.
It, it's perplexing to me, but I, Mr. King is correct in that the most recent as-built survey is the de Blasio survey. That is showing the front of the house at 23.7 and it's showing that little nook off of the pool at 9.5.
I think what we're, I think what we're going to do is we're going to give you a variance for an existing non-conformity. You can't build that any closer, so if you go out and do it and it turns out that it's 11 feet, then you got to build it at, or whatever that is, 10 feet or whatever the one survey says, but, but I think you.
But it sounds to me like they want a patio surround on the backside of that.
Which is going to put that within 10 feet.
Correct.
It's going to put it like 7 feet.
We applied for that variance initially, so.
So how wide is the patio?
I think it was two feet.
The patio was two feet.
Two feet off the edge of the.
Yeah, off that nook, because as I walked it, it was, as I measured it, it was 12 feet.
Let's say that you're asking for the setback at 7.5 feet.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay? My, my report.
I just want to qualify that because you're asking for 7.5 feet because we're, we're assuming the pool is nine and a half feet.
9.5 feet.
Not, 9.5, nine and a half. I'm not an engineer. I say nine and a half, you say 9.5.
Right.
So if it turns out that the pool is further away, I don't think they should be able to build more patio to get to the seven and a half feet. We're given the minimum variance that they need to put a two-foot.
That's fine. I, I just wanted to make sure they were one-stop shopping and they didn't have to come back.
I, I'm the one who, yeah, I said that, it's a mistake, I mean, you want to.
No.
All right, so, tell me what to write. I got to write this down at some point, so I just want to know what to write.
So, on my table, page three of five, the last table shows a swimming pool setback, which includes the pool and patios connected. The requirement is 10-foot. They are proposing 7.5 to the patio and 9.5 to the existing pool coping or edge of the pool.
All right, I'm going to put 7.5 and I'm going to put an asterisk and it's going to say, minimum necessary to have two-foot patio around existing pool. So if it turns out that pool is 11 feet back, then you're only going to go to nine feet. You understand?
Yes.
Max.
You get it, two-foot max.
Two-foot.
Around the surface.
Yeah.
With that.
Well, we're not giving it to them. Craig and I are trying to understand what the variance is they're going to vote on. That's the variance that they're going to vote on. How they vote is up to them.
Yeah.
Yep.
Them being those nice people sitting there.
So the, and I'm going to, I'm going to hop up, the next table says other outbuildings and I asked what the height of the whole pavilion was. Your plans that you submitted tonight indicate it's 10-foot. That complies, so there's no variance necessary for that. I'm going to jump up to the next top zoning table on page three of five. The building setback line to Cape May Avenue, there are several different setbacks indicated on these surveys and proposed plans. The de Blasio plan shows 23.7 to the corner of the house.
Correct.
Is that what you're, that's a setback you're asking for or you're inset a little bit from that?
Or inset a little bit from that, but unfortunately.
We don't have a dimension.
The surveyor did not dimension that, but maybe it can be scaled.
Okay.
I thought the testimony was that you're not building any closer than the existing structure.
Correct.
So do we know what that number is?
23.7.
That's to the face of the structure.
Then, then, then.
The eve comes out nine inches, nine inches from that. I confirmed with de Blasio's office that that dimension is to the face of the building.
Okay.
Not the eve. I know you always ask that question, Mr. Hurle, so.
We're, we're in the process of trying to change the code.
I got the answer for you, so we'd be ready.
Okay, that's, I just, my, my table doesn't match the plans. And there's several different dimensions on the plan, so I have a hard time saying I made a mistake. It should be this, and I'm not sure what this is.
Well, I, Mr. Gazunis, you know we're nothing if not consistent. So what I do is whatever chart we decide on tonight, Craig changes his chart and then I take his chart and I cut and paste it and put it in the resolution. And then that's what you can build. So if this thing is different than that chart, they're going to have to move the, so I just want to, I know you're not the surveyor, but it's, you know, I want to help you. I want to make sure it's right.
The, I, I placed my faith in the de Blasio survey because it is, the last survey was done as a,
Okay.
as is existing condition survey.
So what is the setback variance you need on that survey?
23.7. It's going to be less than that, but it's not, it does not extend closer than 23.7.
So on my table.
Yes.
Building setback line where it says Cape May Avenue, I have 24.6 feet existing. We are changing that to 23.7 feet. And then under the proposed column, we're changing that to 23.7 feet, being conservative. It's probably inset a little bit of that, but.
Right.
Because if you.
We don't know what that dimension is.
If you also look on the de Blasio plan, the garage area on the left of the building where it says 23.7, that comes out farther than the right side of the house. So part of the house is out farther where the garage is and then where the actual house is, it's back farther.
Okay, so that takes care of the setback, that takes care of the pool setback. The only thing we have left is the lock coverage. Is my table correct?
Yes.
So 30% is the maximum permitted, 50% exists and 42 point, 42% is proposed.
Okay, so the proposed is 37.
It's a 37% coverage, working the proposed down to 7,100 feet.
So your testimony tonight, I thought you said there were some modifications.
Yes.
Knocked that down further to 37%.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that includes the pavilion and the stairs that are all.
No, the house just went up. It was a one-story house. It just went up off the back part of the house, off the kitchen.
Yeah, you can see it in the before and after photo, Miss, yep, yep.
I just had to ask those questions. If the board approves your variances, I become the police officer and make sure that the plans match that, so.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Bring your bathing suit.
I have a question for you. On the planning board, the environmental committee always reviews the plans and things like that. Does that doesn't happen with zoning board?
Karen, do we send those to the?
They've never been sent to the environmental commission for zoning board applications.
I just don't know why people have those planning have to go towards that.
Typically, the planning board, you're dealing with site plans and subdivisions that are larger developments.
When I first started, they didn't even go to the planning board, so we're one step closer, Stacy.
I just want to make sure there's no.
Okay.
Plans that have been planted that were.
Well, we're doing the opposite. Some of the plants that are there are deemed invasive. And the barberry and the burning bush, and we're doing all Cape May County native, not, I mean, there's a few things, you know, that we're keeping, azalea here and a crepe myrtle there, but it is our attempt to, you know, to go meet more than the requirement and.
The council passed a ordinance that per planning county that goes along.
No, 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 we've used the Cape May County, like, well, okay. Well, just as far as knowing what's local and like native plants to the area that are for, I mean, just not as far as, you know, I mean, certain things like, yeah, I mean, I wouldn't think, I mean, I know what those usually are for vines and things that spread, like wisteria and those, that's usually what those, yeah. Well, they probably should, but yeah, that's. No, we've, yeah, we've been trying our best to kind of, you know, overly meet requirements and that.
The hot tub's already out.
I see a fireplace in here.
It would be adjacent, in, it's in part of the kitchen area that we've, I mean, I'm not a kitchen designer, but that was, in talking about it, the.
Tell me what plan you're referring to. The handout tonight.
Yeah, we kind of wanted to just put like a fireplace in the back with a grill.
Right up next to the pavilion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Under the pavilion. Under the pavilion.
Yeah, and I accommodated.
The zoning code doesn't regulate the fireplace. I mean, so it's permitted so long as it's not, it's not, it's not within the setbacks and it's, so it conforms.
It would be with, you know, and with, I mean, as I pictured it enough to the behind that it would, you know, to allow for the mason to use some, for a chimney or some sort of exhaust.
I think actually, how I'm imagining, is that part of the setback, right, where you put the fireplace? Or does that be set out in line?
It's, it's towards the, it's not towards the, it's, it's towards the, like, the opposite of Trenton Avenue side. So it would be.
We want it under the pavilion.
Yeah, it'll be, I mean, I just didn't, when we were discussing it, I accommodated, if need be, I added in an extra, you know, if that was going to be impervious, something that came out the back and just to cover, you know, if, what that would require from a, you know, a fireplace builder, a stone mason, I suppose.
Any additional questions? Craig, you're up again.
Okay, I've gone through a lot of my report. I've gone through a lot of my report, but let's just highlight the things I haven't touched upon. My March 30th, 2023 application review. This is a project located in the R1 low-density residential district. You've heard testimony from the applicant indicating what they're proposing to do and what variances are sought. I'll move on to completeness review. So, item number five, we asked for some plans and elevations of the pavilion structure that was submitted tonight. Setbacks to the proposed patio must be dimensioned. What I would also add on to this is there's numerous inconsistencies, so the compliance set should be revised so that all of the landscaping plans and the architectural plans are all consistent with regards to dimensions and whatever, if the board approves variances, they should all be the same. Okay, item number 19, topography. So, existing topography has been provided, and we've asked for a grading and drainage plan must be provided for the proposed improvements. That can be done as a condition of approval. Item number 23, location of trees. We've asked for that to be provided. Street trees should be indicated and noted to be preserved if there are any. I do think there are some out there, so otherwise, you're gonna have to replace those and provide the requisite number of street trees. Items number 26 and 27, we supported the waiver request. 28, so any pool improvements trigger the new stormwater requirements, so the design calculations have to be provided as a condition of approval. And finally, you asked for a waiver from item number 31, which is appropriate for this, and we supported that waiver and did recommend bringing this application complete. So, just to summarize, there's three variances required, I believe. We talked about, and I'll just highlight this, we made some revisions, so hammer at home. Building setback line from Cape May Avenue, these are to the front porch and entryway addition improvements. 25-foot is the required setback. 23.7 exists, and they can, those improvements can come no closer than 23.7. Lot coverage, 30%. 50% exists, 37% is proposed. That's an improvement, but it's still non-conforming. There are no issues with the pavilion. That conforms with everything. The swimming pool, 10-foot, excuse me, 10-foot setback is required, which includes the pool and patios. They're proposing, based on the de Blasio survey, 9.5 to the existing pool. They propose a two-foot, why am I having a hard time saying it? Two-foot paver surround, which will make that setback 7.5 feet to the patio. And in no case may that patio paver surround be greater than two-foot at that area. So those are the three variances. My general review comments start on page four of five. These should all be conditions of approval. Setback dimensions, they all have to be revised and placed on the plan. Item number two, the zoning table should be revised to reflect comments in this review memorandum and whatever the board approves. Three, we've asked for construction details to be provided for the permeable paving surface that are proposed for that 50% lot coverage credit. Item four is the required to comply with the new ordinance 485-2022, which is the minimum stormwater management and grading requirements. Five, we've asked them just to add the parking calculations to be provided in accordance with the residential site improvement standard for the bedrooms proposed, and I do think they are conforming, but we would ask them to be placed on the plan. Pool equipment locations must be provided and comply with the setback requirements. So you have to show those and make sure that they meet those minimum setbacks. Pool safety fencing is required, that's a standard condition. Item eight is our standard condition that they have to replace the sidewalk adjacent to the subject site to the satisfaction of the board engineer. Nine is our standard condition that they have to provide an inspection escrow, and the CO is tied to the acceptance of improvements. 10 is our recommendation that they comply with the requirements of the Shade Tree Commission, Fire Department, Environmental Commission, and Public Works Department, and we received reviews from the Fire Department dated 5/9/23 recommending approval. Public Works dated 5/10/23 recommend an approval. And the Shade Tree Commission, 4/3/23 recommend an approval, and with the comment, "There are no significant trees involved in this project." All right. 11, compliance with all other state, county, and local approvals. 12, the project is not located in the historic district. 13, they're required to comply with any and all applicable affordable housing requirements at the time of approval. Issuance of building permits or certificate of occupancy is applicable. And finally, should the board grant approval, the applicant is required to revise the plans to address all conditions of approval and submit six sets for review to the board engineer. That's the summary of my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions the board has. I thought the bedrooms were indicated in, so I think their minimum requirement is two parking spaces? How many bedroom?
Seven bedrooms.
There's seven bedrooms?
Four parking.
So you have four parking spaces, okay.
Yeah.
Yep, that's, that's the requirement. There's four parking spaces are required, and they're proposing four. So we can change that in my review, too.
Yeah, that addition was by purpose.
Any other questions for Craig? Okay, at this time, we'll open up to the public. Anyone within 200 feet would like to comment?
And please state your name and your address, spell your name, and then I'll swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth up you got?
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll try to keep this brief, this is so late, and we've been talking rules ad nauseam, but I'm going to mention again, because I don't have a lot of concerns, and it's nice to see everything's running smoothly over there. However, the current pool setback issue is currently first and foremost on my mind, simply because we share a very tight property area. And when I came in to look at plans, I did note that the pool was nine feet, I think it was six inches from the property line. The fence is right on the property line. And that it is a 10-foot setback for that pool. So, since I wasn't privy to all the new plans, and I wasn't sure exactly now here, the pool, you know, I think the pool is not going to change, so that would remain at nine steps. But the landscaping around the pool, that might be an issue. But maybe you addressed that? Like I said, I was, I came and looked at everything, but I didn't see all this new stuff. But my concern is that the pool and the pavers are gonna be cutting into, well, beyond the 10-foot property line, but what I have fear of is the trees that run along are arborvitae that make a beautiful natural border between the two houses. We have three on my side of the property line, and currently, 1260 has 16 to 20 of them. Now, those maintain, like I said, integrity, yards, privacy, and they're mutually, like, beneficial to both of us. Now, depending on what's done with the pool area, I'm just concerned that maybe these arborvitae would hold out, and that would be really a total misfortune. So, without saying that, I don't know what your future is, but I'd like just to bring it to your attention that the more we approach over with the pool patio, obviously, the pool's staying put, but the, you know, the walkway, it could jeopardize that natural buffer that these trees now are, I'd say, at least a story in a half. So, it's a really wonderful separation that runs the length of, how was it, 125 feet?
Are the arbor...
The other...
Let's resolve that one, man.
Are they being preserved?
The trees are being preserved, and that planting is being increased.
You're adding, what are you adding?
So we're adding a perennial, so in front, in front, there'll be a line of perennial bed, as stated on...
Okay, so the arborvitae are remaining and you're subjugating them?
Yes.
Okay. Is that okay?
Okay. The other issue I had concerns the drainage from your yard. The rainwater would pour down their sidewalk and basically fill a portion of their sidewalk on Trenton Avenue and my complete sidewalk, leading to pedestrians literally having to get off the sidewalk, walk down Trenton, and jump back on. And this went on for years and years. And I've noted, though, in the last over a year, that this is not occurring, and it's because of the deconstruction of the backyard, so that water isn't draining all into the sidewalk. So, I guess my fear was how much permeable surface was going to be in the back, because I was there when your grandparents cleared the back and paved everything. And because of that, it disrupted the entire sidewalk, and the water just flows through the lowest lying, obviously, area. And it wasn't just an issue for me and my front yard, but it was actually in your front yard as well. So I just wanna address that and make sure that in all the plans that are being done, that drainage is addressed and that this doesn't happen again. And I guess now there are some more stormwater ordinances for this type of drainage that would be nice to make sure that they're all met as well, so we don't have everybody, you know, side stepping into the street when they hit our block on Trenton.
This, this block is notorious for its drainage problems. And so, as a condition of any approval that the board grants, I've recommended as a condition that they're gonna be required to provide a stormwater system that addresses the stormwater, and making sure that it's a better situation than what it is now.
Thank you. Anyone else within 200 feet?
Sir, please state and spell your name.
I'm losing my eyes, though. And it's difficult for me to be regimented in what I'm doing. I mean, my notes are, like, worthless, but I'm glad the board answered most of my questions beginning. My name is Pierre, P-E-E-R-H-Schmidt-S-C-H-L-I-D-T-C-H-N. I was a member of this board for about 20 years, and I'm glad to see it still functions the way it should. The public is probably the most missing piece at our hearings, and we don't listen to them enough or give them enough time to talk, or almost scare the hell out of them because of the professionals dominating the time and telling us what to think. I didn't hear that happen, but thank you. So my only remarks are really to my friend Craig, who I remember is younger than me.
How've you been?
Age does not bring wisdom. It brings medical bills. Craig, I only am looking for a couple of conditions to add to yours. The gazebo, I thought, light fee and ancillary building, that's taken care of. I didn't know what the height was. But I'm concerned about light. Are there gonna be any sort of overflow of light into the neighbors' yard? Your earlier comment from the prior application, the gentleman wrote, that's gonna become a tragic nuisance. And unless you become full-time, you're gonna find all kinds of things in your pool besides kids. Alligators have shown up in Cape May pools a lot. So I'd recommend that that fencing definitely be a stipulation in the condition. My final thought is the noise, and I'm going back to gazebo. I actually was there with a pro that's her own that house. I was a much younger person, and they had a lot of parks. And you could hear it. Now, I've lived, I didn't give you how old I've been, 1300 Idaho Avenue. I've lived there since 1975, like, 1977, and I've seen a lot of changes up and down that road. That water issue that Lisa was talking about basically happened when Cape May Avenue got developed on that side, because the requirements for their drainage plan was higher than the existing houses on Idaho Avenue who were their neighbors. So I'm glad to see that we're moving in a direction of correcting that long-term. So I can close with saying, and I really think that the zoning board, and you proved it to me tonight, it's not just the applicant. A lot of people think, "Oh, it's a done deal, I shouldn't show up." Well, Lisa came to me a few weeks ago. I came back from Jefferson Hospital today, and I said, "I'm gonna go to a meeting, let it happen. If I drop dead, Lisa will be in a friendly place." She presented accurate information from a knowledgeable standpoint, and to not allow that promoted would be a failure. My only complaint, as a person who doesn't see well, I'm glad I didn't waste my time trying to read anything that was presented, because without, what you're gonna qualify as being accurate, how would a person be able to come in if they didn't have accurate information to argue about? So, I give Craig credit there to push an accurate record of what's going on here. And again, I compliment the board on being a very professional, accurate board. One recommendation, on those tough votes, when it has to be a yea or nay, I think it would be a good idea to voice what were the negatives and positives that had you built that way. We used to do a lot of hard work, and it makes you have to think. And you learn that, you know, sometimes your vote really does mean something, and we're either the last one that's gonna have to tell somebody yes or no. And it'd be nice to give them a reason why. Thank you.
It's also helpful to me for the resolution, because I need to have reasons that I don't make up myself, but rather articulated by the board. So that's why a lot of times I try to remind you to give your reasons, particularly if you're voting no.
Thank you, Pierre.
Okay, at this time, we'll close it to the public.
Okay, the motion that I'd recommend being made, which we make in the affirmative, is a motion to approve the variances one, two, and three on page three of the engineering report relating to front setback, lot coverage, and the distance from the pool to the patio. With the waivers and conditions as outlined by the board engineer, this is a C2 variance. I went over the balancing test earlier. This is not a use variance. This is the easier one, so to speak. It's a simple majority, and it's weighing the benefits of the project against any detriments that you see and any negative impact in the zone plan or zoning ordinance or the neighborhood. Anybody has any questions? I'll answer them, but that's the motion I'd recommend being made.
Okay, so I'll make the motion.
Can I ask a question? Is it always subject to Craig's conditions of approval in the memorandum?
It always is.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
I try to say it each time.
Okay, thank you.
Your motion. So move.
I'll second.
Mr. Levin motions, Mrs. Notch seconds. Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Mrs. Notch?
Yes.
Ms. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Zexar?
Yes.
Mr. Cattado?
Yes.
Mr. Vannudo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a safe, pleasant weekend.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? Anyone?
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, everyone. Good night.